Good morning. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Welcome to City Hall and to our council chambers. This morning, our invocation will be given by Pastor Rick Barretta with Believe Church. Pastor?
Good morning, everybody. I pray everybody's doing well today. I always get a kick of hanging out with you guys, and so thank you so much for this honor. Let's pray. To have a most gracious Father, you're so good in all of your ways. So first and foremost, we want to give you thanks. Thanks for your goodness, thanks for your mercies, thanks for your faithfulness that is brand new every single morning, Lord. In the middle of all of the besetting problems and issues that this council will be hearing and deliberating here today, Lord, we put our trust in you and in you alone, Father. We thank you, Lord, for giving us a boldness today, Father God. We trust you over all of our fears, we trust you over all of our wounds, and we trust you even over all of our own accomplishments, Father God. We put our complete trust in you and present ourselves to your arms, Father God. Unite us in love today, Lord. May everything that is decided here today be in your timing and be in your perfect will, Father God. May the speech and the actions in this chamber this day, Father, reflect the love of your Son and the guidance of your Spirit. We thank you, Lord, for the good things that are about to happen in this place, Lord, because we know that good things come from you. In all this, we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Pastor. And our pledge of allegiance to the United States flag and to the Texas state flag will be led by Brandon Chapman. He is a senior at Flower Bluff High School, a Citgo distinguished scholar, and he is off to Rice University.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now for the Texas pledge. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Brandon, thank you, and good luck in your studies.
Thank you.
Ms. Wetta, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Paulette Juajardo.
Present.
Council members Roland Barretta.
Here.
Sylvia Campos.
Here.
Eric Antu.
Here.
Gil Hernandez.
Here.
Kalen Paxton.
Here.
Everett Roy.
Here.
Mark Scott.
Present.
Carolyn Vaughn.
Here.
City manager Peter Zanoni.
Present.
City attorney Miles Rizley. Mayor and council, a quorum of the council, and the required charter officers are present to conduct the meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Wetta. That'll take us to Section E, and that is our city manager's comments and update on city operations. We have one item today, Ms. Zanoni.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Good morning, Mayor, and members of the council and the community. We do have one item on our city manager's report, and it is a presentation on the city's annual financial report. And so annually, the city is required to do a comprehensive annual financial report, and we have an outside auditing firm that does that for us. It's not the internal auditor. It's an outside one that we've used for the past couple of years, Weaver and Associates from Houston. And so today, we're going to go over this with the city council. Recently, it was presented to the city's audit committee chaired by Councilman Barrera. And so this will be a similar version presented there. I think Heather's going to come up and introduce the presenter from the firm. And I believe we have, and Heather's probably going to introduce him, but we have a lot of our finance staff members in the front row.
Yes, we do.
So, we're in love with you, Heather. Thank you.
So, good morning, Heather Holbert. This is the city manager. So, as Peter said, we are presenting our annual comprehensive financial report. This is for the financial period ending September 30th, 2024. We do have Representative Matt Rogers from Weaver who will be doing the presentation. He is our audit director on our audit, so he works very closely with our staff and his team to go through all of the financials and all the information for the period for the end of our fiscal year. This audit would not be possible without the cooperation of all the city departments and the wonderful work done by our accounting and finance staff. So, we do have them here. They put in countless hours reconciling, tying and ticking and adding and all those kinds of things that you have to do before the auditors arrive, and then working with the auditors as we go through that process. So, if you'd like to, I'd love to give them a little hand, a round of applause for all the work that they do in getting this together.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyway, I will turn it over to Matt to give you the report.
Hi, good morning. My name is Matt Rogers. I am, as Heather mentioned, a director with Weaver, based out of our Woodlands office, but we are a Houston-based firm, Texas-based firm, and we've been performing the audit for the city for the past couple of years. So, the document that we are auditing is the annual comprehensive financial report, which I have a copy here. And so it's a large document, a lot of work goes into preparing this information. And I have a short presentation here to kind of just go over some of the audit process, audit results, and some of the required auditor communications, and then leaving room for any questions that you may have. So, I just want to introduce the audit team. Myself is the engagement director. Not with me today is our engagement manager, Randy Vaughn. We also have Katie Miller and Nick Leitkepp, who were senior associates on the engagement that led a lot of the day-to-day tasks. And then also, we have some audit staff that may be onsite or remote at various points during the audit, and also our separate IT advisory services team that works on looking at some of the financial software systems that help support the numbers that go into the audited financial statements. So, our audit schedule, we do some initial planning before what we call our interim fieldwork. Our interim fieldwork is usually performed over the summer or towards the end of summer. This year, we came out in September. We do some testing, such as internal control analysis, evaluation. We do some walkthroughs. We do some internal control testing of design and effectiveness. And then we also kind of gauge kind of what has changed at the city, what has changed that might redirect our audit plan or our audit procedures. Are there any new risks? Are there any changes in departments and how the city's structured? Any new operations, things like that? Then we come out for our final fieldwork. That time period is January to March. And then, once we complete our fieldwork, final fieldwork, and we have sufficient appropriate audit evidence, we then complete our audit report and present it to audit committee, which we did last month, and then we start discussing the next cycle. So, our audit is performed under multiple sets of audit standards. The first set of audit standards, generally accepted auditing standards that applies to all audits under gas. And then we also perform the audit under generally accepted government auditing standards. We also call that GAGAS or Yellow Book, which is specific to state and local governments. We also perform what's called a single audit. That is a audit of the federal and state programs of the city, because the city expends more than $750,000 in federal and state programs. We also do some compliance testing. That's associated with the GAGAS or Yellow Book audit standards, and so we do look at some compliance areas that affect financial reporting. A lot of that includes things like looking at Public Funds Investment Act and how it's applied to this city's investments. We look at various procurement requirements, making sure that state, federal, and local procurement procedures are being followed. So, this is an executive summary of our audit opinion and reporting over the ACF, the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. The type of auditor's report we issue this year is an unmodified opinion. That's also known as a clean opinion, and that is the highest level of assurance you can receive in a financial statement audit. We also report on internal control over financial reporting. If we had identified any material weaknesses, significant deficiencies, or material noncompliance, we would report that here. We did not identify any material weaknesses in internal control. We did identify one significant deficiency, which I'll just a little more in detail on another slide, and we did not identify any material noncompliance. This slide is showing the results of the federal awards, or the federal single audit. We also issued an unmodified opinion on the, what's called the CIFA, Schedule of Expenditures of Federal Awards. We did not identify any material weaknesses. We did not identify any significant deficiencies or any material noncompliance. The two major programs this year, under the federal single audit, were the immunization grants and then the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds, also known as ARPA. Under the state awards, so that's a state single audit, this is essentially the same slide, we issued an unmodified opinion, no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies, no material noncompliance. And the program that was considered the major program this year was the hospital preparedness program. So, as I mentioned, there was one significant deficiency. You'll notice here, it says recurring, so this is actually reported in the fiscal year 23 financial statements. What this really boils down to is that when we come in for our year-end audit procedures, there's a certain number of audit deliverables and financial statement close procedures that should have already occurred in fiscal year 23. There was a list of things that had not yet been prepared, and so the untimeliness of that led to delayed issuance. We saw some of that this year, but not as much. So, I do see an improvement in the processes in terms of getting the financial statement close more timely, but we did encounter some issues with some of the schedules, just getting the information informed that would go into this report. So, again, we are just issuing that as a recurring finding, but the expectation is that those improvements should be essentially resolved by fiscal year 25. So, we also, as part of our audit contract, we are issuing a report over the passenger facility charges that are associated with the airport. And so, this is just an executive summary of those results. We issued an unmodified opinion over the passenger facility charge audit. We did not identify any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, and that is audited under an audit guide, the Passenger Facility Charge Audit Guide, which is issued by the FAA. So, what is our responsibility in terms of the audit? We are forming and expressing opinions about whether the financial statements have been prepared by management with your oversight fairly in all material respects in accordance with GAAP, so accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America. And so, we perform the audit to obtain reasonable rather than absolute assurance. What that essentially means is that we do not test 100% of transactions or every single balance, but we do apply materiality, we do apply our risk assessment and make auditor judgments to determine what we're going to test, how we're going to test it, to what extent we're going to test it. There is a component auditor associated with the Corpus Christi firefighters' retirement system, and so our report reflects that those balances are derived from that auditor's report and we do not opine on that. The supplementary information, which is included in this report, we provide an in relation to opinion. We issued an unmodified opinion in relation to that information. There is also required supplementary information and what we call other information, which is introductory and statistical sections in this report, which we do not opine on, but this provide a very detailed, and in the statistical section, trend analysis of a lot of the financial data of the city over a period of upwards of 10 years. Uncorrected misstatements, so we are required to inform the governing body of any incorrect misstatements that are above what we call trivial but not material to the financial statements. We did have one this year. It pertains to capital assets that were classified as repairs and maintenance in fiscal year 23 but should have been capitalized. Essentially, this is a beginning balance adjustment that was corrected in current year activity. So, if you have any questions on that, I'd be glad to answer. Corrected misstatements, so if we had any material misstatements that we identified during the course of our audits that were corrected by management, we would also be required to inform you of that, that we did not identify any misstatements that were considered material individually or in the aggregate during the course of the audits. So, with that, I would gladly answer any questions that you may have. I appreciate the finance department being here today, and Sergio and Julie have done a great job at kind of rallying the team together and getting everyone to work together to get all the information, because it's a lot of work to get this done, and they really delivered this year.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I think we have a question or comment. Councilwoman Campos?
Thank you. Thank you so much for the report. Okay, so, back to page 13 on the cause. Actually, I guess it's a summary, a schedule of audit findings. I was also, I highlighted that in page 12, cause. The city has experienced high turnover, creating difficulties with staff having the knowledge and experience to perform the annual closing procedures and prepare supporting documents for annual financial reporting. So, I see the staff here. Do we, how long have the staff members been in this position? I mean, how do you determine what is, have they been there, you know, one year to say that they're too new, or five years? What is, what criteria do you use?
Sure, council member. Sorry, I'm the Assistant Director of Finance and Procurement. To answer the question, as far as the high turnover experienced, there was turnover in senior staff.
Okay.
And so that senior staff, the way the office was managed prior to my arrival and prior to the Assistant Director's arrival, there's a very silos of information. And so when that information, when those folks retire or leave the city, that was not passed out to the team. And so therefore, we've changed that approach.
Good.
A lot of staff here are some, have some tenure.
Yeah.
And so we are very more, much more hands-on with the operations.
Okay, and that's what I've noticed on some of the departments that are not, I guess, working as efficiently as they could, is that, you know, I guess it's kind of like the lieutenants, you know, under, the leader of that department will reflect. I mean, if those, for example, the, you know, wastewater, I think it's stormwater, it seemed to be that they had a good person coming underneath that was able to take on those leadership positions, and I'm hoping that we're doing everything that we can to supplement and to, I mean, if they need to be taking, you know, extra courses or whatever it is, because this is vital. I mean, you know, you're like, you don't hear, you don't know, but we all want to watch our dollars, and we all want to make sure that all the departments are functioning correctly, and so we really rely on you all to beat those ears and, you know, to make sure that we're doing, we're spending our dollars correctly. So, you know, when I saw that, I did flag it for myself, and I just want to make sure that we're doing everything possible. And for me, that's what's happened to some of these departments, is that that has not happened, you know, that we have not had a good training, or I don't know what you would call that, but to make sure that we value our employees and that we're bringing them up to par, so that they can be able to take on those positions when they become available.
Yes, ma'am. We do have a strong training program internally where we're meeting with staff. They do have weekly meetings, so we've had some opportunities to continue to train and develop, bringing folks in to teach accounting. So, we do acknowledge that that is needed, and that's something we are focused on.
And how often do you review your policies to make sure that these, that all these positions are, what do they call it, SOP, the standard operating procedures? How often do you, how often is it done for this department, or for any department, really? The standard operating procedure for this department?
So, being new to the city, we are actually reviewing a lot of our standard operating procedures. Our current focus is on our payroll department, reviewing those processes. We've brought in contract services from TML to help us analyze some opportunities for improvement, as well as the work that's been done by our internal audit department to highlight areas we can improve in. And so that, when those things happen, we do assess and review SOPs, and so I would say annually, we definitely have a few policies in line that we are updating and are waiting to roll out here soon.
Okay, so, I would like to know, because when we received the report back from the ACS, it seemed like it'd been years, like, they had not been updated, but again, I'm only, you know, comparing, so I just want to make sure that we are following the standard operating procedures for every department.
Yeah, councilwoman, that is an issue with the city that I inherited six years ago, so many departments don't have, don't have, one, they don't have standard operating procedures written down, or two, they're very dated, and so it's something we're working across the organization on. Some departments are in better shape. I would say finance is probably in better shape, but with the new director, like Sergio, he's going to look at them and bring his perspective in. But admittedly, and I'll tell you right now, that many departments don't have current ones. They don't have, they don't have, they may not even have any, and if they do, they may be dated, so.
Okay.
Yeah, we actually had a staff position that we had to let go in the budget last year. We eliminated the position, we didn't let anybody go, but their job was to work with all the departments to see what do we have to write. And so we made good progress for that one year. We wrote a lot of standard operating procedures, and it's an important part, it's kind of the backbone of running the business.
That's what I would imagine.
Right, and so you want them to, but a department, like we talked about last week, that didn't really have a standalone department, it's work in progress, but the critical, it seems, you know, kind of a little bit nerdy maybe to focus on that, but if you don't have that, then it's tough to run your business.
Right, yeah, it's kind of like the plumbing and, you know, the electricity.
Right.
Make sure that you have that intact. So, anyway, okay, well, I'm glad we're, have a program, have a process, but you just mentioned that we eliminated that position, so how are we going?
Yeah, we had to. It was in our innovation group, and so, you know, we had a three-team process review group that was, that was part of the city manager's office for about three years, three, four years, and as part of the $9 million budget reduction last year, I recommended that reduction. So, now that responsibility falls to the directors. You know, there's still, there's still some, there's still attention to it, it's just not an independent standalone position, so all the directors, assistant directors, leadership team have to pick up that work.
I don't know. I don't know about eliminating that position, but all right, thank you.
Well, we had to, we, you know, we had to, we need a balanced budget, and we had to reduce $9 million.
Well, the thing is that we have eliminated, like, the auditor, you know,'s position, or not eliminated, but we did not have it filled for the longest time, and I know for a fact that, you know, for years, we did not have an independent auditor, so it's, for me, it's vital that we make sure that we have that, those positions filled. Thanks.
We agree. Thank you.
And Peter, you know, this, in our upcoming budget, I think some of the things that, for example, this position that has been cut should probably come back so that the council does know, you know, you do see the importance of what seems is just, okay, standard operating procedures is, you know, something in a book, but it's extremely critical to a department, and I think that's.
Okay, we can review some of those, all the reductions that we did last year. I think we talked about that before.
Sure.
Yeah, good idea.
Thank you. Councilman Hernandez?
Okay, I just want to kind of review some of the things that, with regards to this type of audit. It only, you're looking at only what, if the money that has been spent and received has been accounted for. You don't look at the appropriateness of those expenditures, right?
Well, I guess to be more specific, we're looking to make sure that the information presented conforms to generally accepted accounting standards. So, with that in regard, we're making sure that the balances presented here are accurate and reliable to the users of the financial statements. If during that process, we see something that would indicate something that seems that it would be unethical or something like that, then we would, you know, we have, we have certain standards that we have to report some of those things at the certain level of management.
Okay, but what I'm saying is that you don't necessarily verify that there's a contract associated with the payment?
Not always. Sometimes we do, but it depends on if we're looking specifically at the procurement side of the transaction, or if we're just looking at the payment or just the invoice, and so it depends on which area of the financial.
Is this just a sample? Kind of, you're looking at particular, you know, high danger areas, or, but you're not looking at, you know, whether or not every expenditure is contracted correctly?
Correct. We do have to apply materiality, and so we, and with that, we do sample, and, you know, a lot of times sampling involves looking at the higher dollar transactions or the larger amounts.
Okay. Also, I want to make a correction. On page 10, we had changed our effective rates for utilities from two years to one year.
Page 10 of the report.
Page 10 of your report, I'm sorry. Page 10 of your report, not of your, not of your presentation. Okay, thank you.
And one last question. So, the recommendations given, when do they get implemented or, you know, put into?
The one deficiency is one of staffing, and it's been corrected, and that the director and assistant director have been on board for about a year now. And as Matt said, as the cycle kind of plays out, the deficiency should go away by the next audit, because the staff is in place. This originated from not having a director or an assistant director for some time, right? And so there was slippage and transfer of knowledge, and now that the director and assistant director have been there for over a year, that knowledge transfer and general business understanding exists, so it's just some catch-up. Is that the correct way of saying it, Matt?
Well, actually, I was referring to, it was something simple, let's see, modify the financial statement closing procedures.
Yeah, that's the one.
Or quarterly.
Yeah, yeah.
So, that's a, I thought that was more of a, well, procedural thing.
Yeah. If you don't have, like Councilwoman Campos said, if you don't have strong leadership at the head of the department, which we didn't have about a year ago or so, making sure the work's getting done on schedule is the issue, and that was the issue.
Okay.
And so that's been corrected. We recruited both the director and assistant director, and Heather is the ACM overseeing it, and so that deficiency has kind of been fixed. There's still a little catch-up from a few months of not having that in place in the prior year.
Yeah, I agree with that.
And Mayor, if I can, just, Matt, I should call you Mr. Rogers, but we do appreciate the presentation. This is an important, just to put it in context, an important part of running the business. And so we all know we're working on the budget now. That's the front end of the business, is the budget. And then when the year is concluded, we have an independent auditor come in and look at our financials. What Matt just told you is that we have a strong financially managed city. What I like to hear, in the years I've been doing this, is what Matt said, which is that this is a clean audit, and if it wasn't clean, he wouldn't have said that. He would have, he would have named off numerous deficiencies that existed and how we manage our money, and he didn't say that. This is a clean audit, and it is of the highest rating, is what he said. So, we have a good independent assessment of our finances, which leads to the position that we continually talk about, which is that we're a well-financially managed city of 4,000 employees, $1.8 billion budget. Matt looked at the operating, he looked at the capital budget, looked at some grants, and found no material weaknesses, and says that this is of the highest quality in terms of financial stability and financial management, and we have a clean opinion. And so those are some simple takeaways for the council and the community to understand. That's, we're required to do an audit annually, and we're required to use a kind of a third-party evaluator for independence, and so that's the report he gave. And with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Mayor.
That's wonderful. Thank you for pointing that out. Councilwoman Vaughn?
How long has this audit been out?
We just issued last month.
Well, let me ask you. Look how big this is. There is no way that we can get it right this minute. Not your fault. I don't know whose fault it is. Audit committee may have gotten it, I don't know, but I'm sure I would have had some more questions, some questions in here, but there is no time to go through this huge book when we just got it. So, Mr. Zanoni, we need to do something about that.
Yeah, the, let me see, did we deliver it to the council? I know we gave it to the audit committee, okay. So, we can, well, Sergio can meet individually at council, we can schedule another briefing. Councilwoman, we understand, it's a complicated book, and we'll, you need, sometimes you need assistance of the professionals to help you understand what's in here, so we can easily set up a meeting with you if you'd like to go through it.
Well, we might be smarter than you think. I mean, but I get what you're saying.
I didn't mean to say.
I know that, I know that, but just for the, I get that from Gil.
Yeah.
But just for the public to hear some of the questions that we had, I wished we, I'm just saying, that in the future, we need to get it, if the audit committee got it, we should have gotten it.
Right, so the city's practice is, prior to six So, the city's practice is, prior to six years ago, the council didn't even get this briefing.
Can we change that?
So, prior to six years, yeah, I fixed it. That's why we're doing it today.
Well, we got it, but let's change it to where we get it sooner, before our meeting.
Right. So, the city's policy is we present the in-depth briefing to the audit committee of the council. That's kind of the business practice. We can do, we can have that meeting here if the council desires, but the audit committee, one of their main functions is to annually hear the financial audit in-depth, and they got it in advance. And so, this is more of a high-level briefing, but if the council wishes to have that in-depth briefing, we can certainly do that. Six years ago, nothing even came to the council.
Right.
Yeah. So, we can look at it.
That's fine. No problem.
That's all I'm asking.
Yeah, we can schedule another briefing if you'd like. Matt, we'll come back.
Okay. Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Campos?
On that same note, same thing with ACS. This is what we received last week, and then the next day, we were supposed to be prepared for it. So, again, the same thing. We just need more time to absorb some of this information that we're supposed to be prepared for. I had to actually call out to some of the, like, animal activists to help me, you know, kind of sort through this and see what we needed to, you know, ask. So, again, we would like some more time and preparation on these briefings, so.
Sure. Councilwoman, just for the record, we did present that a week in advance of the council meeting.
But only, we only had one day from the next to actually read it, so.
We gave it to the council a week in advance. That's fine.
Okay, Councilwoman, we're not, that's not, you know, on the agenda that animals.
All right. But, no.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Scott.
Man, I was going to try to behave myself. But I would ask my fellow councilmembers, if we're given an opportunity to be briefed on this before, that's okay if you don't, but then, don't, you know, like, I was asked to come out to ACS to do a, get a briefing. I spent an hour and a half out there with them going over the same presentation, so maybe I just got special treatment. I don't know. But, and maybe they did realize that Mark needs to hear it twice before it sinks in. I totally get that part. But if we're given an opportunity, I think we should take advantage of it.
Yeah.
Okay, so then you went out there and heard it for an hour and a half before you had heard it from the council, because it was the exact same presentation?
Ms. Campos. Okay, we're going to move on. Councilwoman Paxson.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Zanoni, I know something that we've done in other committees or such where the information may pertain more specifically to that group, and so, they get that first presentation. What comes to my mind the most recent is the Island Mobility Plan, where I met with staff. We had a thorough briefing. It was presented to the Island Strategic Action Committee, which would be the first committee that would touch that report. But then simultaneously, it was kind of made available to everybody. So, perhaps something like that where, you know, as someone who sits on the audit committee, having that time to sit before the report and go through those questions is helpful. But to what Councilmember Vaughn was saying, as a committee member on that, it passed my mind entirely to think, did the rest of the council receive the information? Because we got it there, so perhaps that kind of sequencing, but that's all.
Yeah, no, good input, and I appreciate that. We'll make sure we do that in the future. Yeah.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you, Matt. We appreciate that. It's 12:06, so we're going to go ahead and proceed to item F, which is public comment. And bless you, and I'd like to take a moment to emphasize the importance, as we do every week of this meeting. We handle significant matters concerning taxpayer dollars, making it imperative that we uphold the highest standards of decorum and adherence to our policies. Ladies, thank you all for being here, and gentlemen, yeah, thank you so much, and thank you for all you've done. Our core principles of openness, transparency, and inclusiveness, thank you, guide our actions, and we aim to achieve them while respecting our city council policy, which has been in place for 30 years. Public comment serves as one of the, one avenue for communication, but certainly not the only method. You can also reach out to your members of council by way of phone call, emails, or even an in-person appointment. So, with that said, let's proceed to public comment. Keep in mind the importance of decorum and adherence to this policy. Before we begin, I'd like to ask our city attorney, Miles Risley, to please review the council meeting rules of decorum, which will appear on the screens above us.
All citizens must be courteous, polite, and respectful of one another, including the city council and city staff. The mayor and council members shall be referred to by title and/or title surname. All remarks must be addressed to the mayor and city council and not to the council members as individuals. Citizens are only permitted to speak on city-related subject matter. Speaking on any non-city-related matter is prohibited. Loud, boisterous, profane, or obscene language or behavior is not allowed. Citizens must refrain from any disturbing noise, demonstration, or other act disrupting to the city council business.
Thank you, Mr. Risley. So, individuals will be called upon in the order they signed up electronically. Will first hear in-person comments, followed by virtual public comment. Residents of Corpus Christi will be given priority over non-residents, and if you'll please state your name and the city in which you live before beginning your comments, that's much appreciated. You have two opportunities to make public comment on an agenda item or related business. First is at this time, and second, when the actual item is heard. So, please select one option. Citizen comments are limited to three minutes, while non-resident comments are limited to one minute. Visible timer positioned near the city secretary's desk will assist in managing that allotted time. And if you have a petition or any pertinent information that you'd like us to have, if you'll please hand it to Ms. Wanda First, and she will distribute it to us. So, with that, today we have 11 people signed up for public comment, and we're going to start with Mr. Klepper.
Morning, council, mayor and council. Steve Klepper, 30-plus-year resident of Corpus Christi. We just heard the mayor talk about the importance of public comment and how people should be courteous and respectful, and city attorney read the same material that indicate everyone should be respectful and courteous to each other, including city staff. Last week, I was here for public, oh, I did want to say, the mayor, I have to commend every time. You are very respectful. You thank everybody specifically, even though I know you didn't always agree with what they said. So, thank you to you, and you're a good model for everyone else to follow.
Thank you.
Last week, you'll see in the middle part of that slide what I used during my public comment, and I was posing some rhetorical questions, and I have a picture there of a fellow asking with a question mark with his head rhetorically thinking all these questions. They weren't questions for the council to ask, to answer. They were questions I was suggesting the council consider. This was regarded to the budget, to the city budget. All of my questions were rhetorical. As I was speaking to the slide, the city attorney interrupted me. Next slide, please. Questions of city council or staff are not permitted. Well, it was clear those were no questions presented to the city council. They're rhetorical, and that's why I had that little cartoon. Those are the questions that I asked rhetorically. How do you measure efficiency? How do you measure effectiveness? Are you going to continue what I think has made A? And then I was interrupted and couldn't finish my thought. And what came to mind was the 007 clock. The younger people won't know what that is. Time was running out, and it was like I was confused. What do I say next? Next slide, please. What are rhetorical questions? Just a review? There's a list of them, just right, that's just right from the internet. So, my conclusion, everyone, underlined everyone, should be courteous, including the city attorney. Needless interruption is not courteous. It is not polite or respectful. It is disruptive. And I do want to give a shout-out to the communications department, Steven Gonzalez, all the staff for helping with the slides. So, the public should know it is very easy to have slides like this. The city's staff is very, very good and easy to work with. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Klepper. I appreciate your kind words. Next, we have Susie Saldana. Eli Oliver after that, Kent Oliver after that, and then Rob Bailey after that. Just a little heads up.
Susie Luna Saldana, Corpus Christi, Texas. I come before you today because I'm pretty upset about the money grab that's going on in the Housing Authority. I mean, it is an absolute shame what is happening, and I expect every one of you to take notice of it. How can you allow a committee, because the Housing Authority is a housing authority, is appointed by our mayor, if I understand correctly, and they decided that we're going to sell land, lease it, and there's a money grab there? Somebody's making money out of it. Somebody has to be making money out of it. Who is it, and what are you going to do about it? I know that there are two people that are resigning. You've got a new appointment coming to the Housing Authority, but that Housing Authority has always been good for people. Now, you've got people selling out the land, you losing taxes, the city losing taxes, Delmar losing taxes, the medical hospital board losing taxes, everybody's losing taxes. Who's making money? Those people should be in jail. You should file charges, and they should be in jail. To me, I look at it and I associate it with the times that I have come over here and complained to you about people that sue the city, and then they find ways to ask to save money for the city. That, to me, is an equation. That, to me, is something that has to be stopped. If there are people that grabbing money from the taxpayers that are using it to do it, stop them. Put those people in jail. The ones that did the arrangements, the one that did it, it may look legal, but it isn't. When they take money that we may lose, $6 million, you may lose the ability to have your swimming pools open, the ability to have your libraries open. Why? Because somebody got greedy and they're stealing money. That's, in my opinion, what they're doing. They're stealing money. And they're stealing money out of your pocket, my pocket, the citizens of Corpus Christi. And it is time that this council took a firm step and cleaned that house. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Saldana. Eli Oliver.
I have some handouts.
Sure. Absolutely.
Okay. Can I go ahead and start, or should I wait for the handouts?
Yeah.
Okay. Hi, I'm Eli Oliver. I'm a Corpus Christi resident, and I'm a junior at Annapolis Christian Academy. I am a life scout working on my Eagle Scout project right now. And briefly, my Eagle Scout project involves memorializing the NASA tracking station that was located at Billwitt Park in the 1960s and 70s. Most Corpus Christians have no knowledge of the important role that Corpus Christi played in the space race, assisting NASA in getting a man on the moon. The tracking station was a vital part of all the Mercury, Gemini, Apollo, and Skylab missions. In fact, the first live video from space was transmitted through the facility during the Apollo 7 mission. I plan to install four interpretive panels. Each panel will recognize the role of the tracking station played in each of the Mercury, Gemini, Apollo, and Skylab missions. The panels will have a key component of the missions with high-resolution colored times, photos, and articles, and a timeline listing the astronauts for each mission. The last remaining buildings of the tracking station were demolished in 2019. There's only a remnant of the former antenna foundation footings that remain. It's my hope that this important piece of Corpus Christi history can be preserved. I've received beneficiary approval from our Parks and Recreation Department and project approval from Boy Scout leadership. I've also presented this information to the Corpus Christi Landmark Commission. They are excited about this project and are in full support. I'm using Iconic Sign Group here in town for graphic design and fabrication of the panels, which will be two-foot by three-foot in size, and this is the same company that fabricated the panels near the new Cole Park Pier. I'm using private funding for this project, and I'm getting close to reaching my goal of $15,000. I'm hoping to complete this project early this summer to achieve my Eagle Scout ranking and include that accomplishment on my college applications this summer. Thank you.
Thank you, Eli. Thank you for informing us about, no, no, you're fine. Thank you for informing us about all this. Did you mention on the back of this, you've got the, where you can support and mail a check?
Yes, ma'am.
Got to make sure you got to throw that in there. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you. Question?
Yes, yes. Councilman Hernandez.
Yeah, Peter, I know Parks is aware of this project.
Right.
And let's see if we can help him out and put something together.
Yeah.
I know we have a grand opening for Billwitt Pool.
Right.
Coming up on the 23rd.
23rd, yes, sir.
And so, I probably won't be ready for that, but at least we can do something. It's, it is a, it used to be a military site, so it should be something we can do.
This is a commendable project, Eli, and maybe Eli can join us at the grand opening, you know, and be there and talk a little bit about it.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, and we'll follow up with you.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you, and good work.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir. Councilwoman.
And thanks for the hard work on this.
Yes, sir. My pleasure.
Councilwoman Paxson.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to basically echo that sentiment and see if, you know, what do we have to do to help this endeavor? This is something really remarkable, and in all of these areas where we really showcase how influential the city of Corpus Christi has been, this is a really great project, and perhaps we can include some of this in that ribbon-cutting if we can line up, like you said, line up those schedules, because I think that would certainly add to the overall piece that this park brings. So, thank you for your efforts. Thank you.
Eli, write a check. I'm back to your $50,000. Thank you for being here. Thank you, Councilwoman. Okay, next, we have Kent Oliver. Assuming this is Eli's dad.
So, you've answered a lot of my script already, but I'm going to stay on script anyway. So, Kent Oliver, resident of Corpus Christi, gosh, over 35 years now. I've worked as electrical engineer in oil and gas industry here in Corpus Christi. So, I understand there's an Eagle Scout project that's going to memorialize a NASA tracking station at Billwitt Park. I've received a copy of the first draft of the graphics for one of the interpretive panels that's detailing the missions of the Gemini group, and this is it. So, this is approximately what size the panels are going to be. There's going to be four then, but this is an example of what is going to be shared for the Gemini missions. So, it includes some bullet points. Also, a lot of the original color times articles have been scanned in high resolution. It's also going to be listing all the astronauts and the name of each mission on each of the panels. So, this is kind of a visual. This will be this times four out there. The location of the original facility is in the far-south part of the park. I understand the park's master plan includes placing another soccer field in that area, and that's great for growth. The panels need to be located somewhere in the park that allows maximum amount of viewing to allow citizens of Corpus Christi to learn of this history of Corpus Christi. One of the panels will be including a, what you call an aerial view with a "you are here" mark, so we need to determine where that location is going to be soon, so that can be included with the graphic design, which is happening currently. What else here? With the opening of the new Billwitt Aquatic Center soon, a location near the entrance of the center seems like a reasonable location to consider. Family members of all ages will be visiting the center in the coming years.[1676.04] to allow citizens of Corpus Christi to learn of this history of Corpus Christi. One of the panels will be including a, what you call an aerial view with a "you are here" mark. So we need to determine where that location is going to be soon, so that can be included with the graphic design, which is happening currently. What else here? With the opening of the new Billwitt Aquatic Center soon, a location near the entrance of the center seems like a reasonable location to consider. Family members of all ages will be visiting the center in the coming years. Field trips might even be planned for the center to include the historical significance of this for educational purposes. So I'm requesting that the park's Recreation Department and City Council consider allowing these interpretive panels to be located near the new aquatic center, near an area with high traffic, foot traffic, to allow others to enjoy this. Final graphics of the design are being proposed. Hopefully this week we'll get the first draft of the next panels and then the city officials, obviously, will have to approve that. I don't know if it's the Park Department or City Council, but a combination, but it'd be, city officials will agree on final language and that design before we go to printing and fabrication. And the steel portion of these panels could also match the color scheme that's out there at the Aquatic Center, because those haven't been fabricated or painted yet. We'd like to encourage, if they are near that, that we match the color scheme.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Oliver, and I think some of, most of your questions, Mr. Zanoni, can be addressed by maybe our Parks Director or somebody. Is that what Heather here waiting? Okay, she's already waiting for you. There you go.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that they fabricated and available in early June, so it won't match with the opening.
That's okay. Well, yeah, we're going to accommodate them there, so we appreciate you being there.
Heather, our Assistant City Manager, she can talk more in detail with you, Mr. Oliver. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Mr. Rob Bailey.
Hello, Rob Bailey, resident of Corpus Christi. I wanted to give a little bit more historical information about the tracking station you've been hearing about. As NASA was developing plans to go to the moon, they realized that two places that the spacecraft would fly over in Earth orbit were Corpus Christi and the Cape. So they put very strategic tracking stations in Corpus Christi and the Cape, which would provide 15 minutes of continual coverage for the spacecraft flying overhead. And so therefore, when they developed innovations for the tracking stations, they often implemented them here and in, at the Cape. So a couple of examples. When it became apparent that there were going to be more than one spacecraft involved with lunar landings, they knew they had to rendezvous and dock. Well, Mercury spacecraft couldn't maneuver in space, so they developed Project Gemini to do that. And so they had to develop the spacecraft that could maneuver, change orbits in order to find other spacecraft, which is a very complicated deal. But they also had to have tracking stations that could actually command the spacecraft from the ground. Until then, all they could do was receive telemetry from the spacecraft and also provide radio contact from Houston to the spacecraft. But they had to have tracking stations that could actually bring a spacecraft down in case something went wrong. And so in the first manned Gemini flight in March of 1965, guess where the first orbital maneuver happened? It happened over Corpus Christi, because Corpus Christi and the Cape were the two tracking stations around the whole world who were able to bring a spacecraft down in case there was a problem with it. Likewise, when live television became more and more of an issue, a priority, they wanted to develop a way to give live telecasts from space. Until then, they were only able to film things and develop the film later and just show it on the news. But two tracking stations had the capability of receiving live signals from space, converting them into television standards. They were Corpus Christi and the Cape. So on the first manned Apollo flight, Apollo VII, October 14th, 1967, the first live television broadcast from space occurred over Corpus Christi. And they had several broadcasts in that mission. They were so successful that the astronauts received an Emmy Award for the most entertaining broadcast of the year. So Corpus Christi, in many ways, has a rich heritage, and I'm proud of Eli for commemorating that, and I appreciate your encouragement and support of that. Thank you. Oh, by the way, the City Secretary has a couple of books she's been passing out. Y'all can fight over them depending on who is the biggest moon nerd of the group. The mayor already has a copy of them. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Isabel Ariza. Thank you, Mr. Oliver.
Okay, Isabel Ariza, District Two. I just came because I was rereading a book about social problems in preparation for my fall course, and I came across a quote that really resonated with me, reflecting what I think is happening here in the city. And it says, it was about urban versus rural problems. It says, "Local elites treat cities as settings for growth of their wealth and their power, rather than as settings where real people live, go to school, work at a job, and have friends and acquaintances." And I think that's exactly what's been happening here. I'm thinking about that water summit that the city's going to be hosting, about the one that Mayor Paulette posted about. I looked at the sponsors. There's gold sponsors, and for $3,000, you can have six seats at a table at the summit. For $1,000, you can get four seats. For $1,000, you can get two seats. Platinum sponsors, I don't know how much they have to donate, but Fries &amp; Nichols is one of the platinum sponsors, as well as Vector, Garver, and Airdura. Who knows what they have to pay, but if we pay them, does that mean we're paying for that sponsorship? And also, I know that the Water Department is actually hosting the event, along with some other organizations that I've got to learn more about. Now, on Wednesday, there's going to be an exclusive sponsor network event where, at Noyce's Brewery Company, from four to six. Then there are going to be networking breaks throughout the day on Thursday at 10:00 in the morning and at 2:30. And I just stop and I think about, like, that sounds like a lot of money for some tickets, but when you have starting $757 million for a project and we're looking at the pilot project, starting at $5 million, now at $18 million, like, that's chump change, those thousands of dollars, to be able to, like, make tons of money. And then meanwhile, you know, we have people who don't feel comfortable drinking their water. We have dogs getting dumped in the landfill. We have parks closed. We have library budgets cut. We have Hillcrest residents having to come over here to ask for their neighborhood not to be zoned a heavy industry. You know, we have senior centers whose budgets are being cut, and I hadn't heard too much talk about that. And then I was thinking about the housing authorities scandal, where apartments like Stone Lay Apartments, South Lake Ranch, The Icon, the Villas of Ocean Drive and Azura Apartments, you know, have potential property taxes that could be paid to the community so that we could actually have our services instead of having to fight for them to be cut. But it's looking to expand that, and we could be losing millions of dollars while we have 30,000 residents waiting for Section 8 housing. You guys are proving the conflict theorists correct. We just have the wrong people in positions of power. And I really do think that we need to fire Mayor Zanoni, I mean, sorry, City Manager Zanoni. I would never say that, like, three years ago, but now I'm pretty convinced of it. This isn't a business.
Thank you, Ms. Ariza. Next we have Marilena Garza.
Marilena Garza, District One. It's getting pretty hot outside, right? Can you imagine the people out in Petronilia? Jim Wells, they still don't have water, some of them. Some of them have electricity maybe for a little bit, and then it cuts back out. Shelter got closed. It's hot, you know? I hope all of y'all have a good HVAC person, because, man, let me tell you, beginning of this year, my HVAC system at my office went out. And luckily, I have the means to call an HVAC person. I have a great property owner who came out, got it fixed. But I also own three weenie dogs. And we had to just camp out for about six, seven hours while they were working on my HVAC system, because there's nowhere for me to go. You know, it's hot. So imagine if I didn't have a car or the means to fix my HVAC that quick. You know, I can't go to the library. I can't get an Airbnb. You know, you say three dogs, and they're like, nope, no hotel will let me in. And they're great weenie dogs. They're amazing. They're my kids. I will sit out on a curb in the heat and withgo food and shelter and safety for my animals. Those are my kids. I don't have kids. Those are my kids. I'm not the only one that makes those decisions, and I'm very concerned when the first thing, before you have a full idea of the budget that we're going to cut from the library. It's not allocated in the library's budget, and it's hard to allocate a budget for cooling and heating centers, because we don't know how many days we are going to need those heating and cooling centers. But even if we have them adequately funded, there are some barriers there. I couldn't go. The closest that I could get into the library would be the breezeway, and you know what? I was actually able to pull my car up into the library and work, because I still had to work. I was able to flip up my laptop, but I wasn't able to come into the library. So I'm very concerned. You know, the San Antonio News Express just mentioned that in San Antonio this upcoming week, it's going to be hotter than the Sahara Desert. We're not that far from San Antonio. And this is a serious issue that affects not just people like me, our seniors, our disabled, our most weakest, most vulnerable community. You don't realize how amazing it is to be inside an ACed place until you're told you can't come inside. You can't come inside, you have a cart. You can't come inside, you smell, you have an animal. We can't allow you to come in with food, even though you have a health condition that requires you to have food nearby in case you go glycemic. You can't bring food into the libraries. So we're again, using and abusing our libraries. We use them for heating and cooling centers. They're doing a lot. They do a lot, and they get pennies, and they're always the first people to be said, "We're taking your money." And then we wonder why we're seeing a shortfall in our budget with property taxes and sale taxes. Nobody wants to come here, so quit cutting the quality-of-life programs. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garza. Councilwoman Paxton.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Zanoni, I think, I'm trying to find it really quickly, but I'm not right now seeing it. Did you, did we receive something on cooling centers because of this heat wave that's coming through?
Yes, Councilwoman. So last night, we, I sent you the press release that we issued. So because of the extreme temperatures, the feels like temperature in our area will be around 100. Our protocol is anything above 101, we open our cooling centers. And so we have all of our libraries today, and all of our senior centers serve as cooling centers. They also serve as warming centers in the winter. So they're all open. There's a variety, there's five libraries and eight senior centers, I believe, all open. It was a media release I texted to you all last night. One other thing is that RTA is providing free transportation to and from the nearest depot or bus stop to any one of those facilities at no charge. Anybody entering the bus just needs to say, "I'm going to the cooling center at this location," and they'll take us, take them to the nearest bus stop there. And same thing on the return home.
And, and much like in the freezing, the freeze, are they allowing for transport of animal care or?
Well, they probably are. However, our, like, our library facilities, you can't bring, unless it's a service dog, you can't bring pets into the library facility.
That's what I was, if I, I was trying to kind of encapsulate the key points of that last presentation. It sounded like that was being listed as a barrier to, to finding shelter and care, which I think a good point was brought up. We do utilize our library facilities a lot for these emergency management-type needs. I wonder, are we in any way able to utilize emergency management grant-type funding to assist and offset some of the services provided?
You know, I wrote, I'm going to check in that. I wrote that note down to seeing, in the wintertime, when we have these extreme winter, weather events in the winter, we do work with animal care agencies to shelter the pets. Initially, there was, the pets were taken from the owner and brought to a location. However, in recent times, they stay with the owner. So we, I'll look at that, I'm going to look into that for the cooling centers to see, is there some way to do that?
Is it, thank you, yeah. Is it possible for staff to perhaps talk with this constituent here and see where we could mitigate some of those challenges?
Yeah, absolutely.
Near future, long future, so we can look at good solutions?
Right, absolutely. I made a note, and we'll look into that.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Rachel Caballero.
Good afternoon, Rachel Caballero, 522 Corpus Christi, District One. Good afternoon, all. I am here to exercise my constitutional First Amendment right that supersedes any unconstitutional city ordinance. Traveling and experiencing other cities in our country sheds a lot of light on how communities can thrive and succeed with true, authentic leadership. We are currently not thriving. It is performance review time for some of the highest salary earners on our city payroll. I would like for you all to consider the following during the performance review of the current city manager. A resignation should have been in order long ago, but the money train is moving, and it is moving fast amongst our uninformed community. We do not elect city managers. A city manager is tasked with implementing the council's decisions, managing the operating and capital budget, and overseeing city employees. This is not happening. Instead, we have a prima donna that is constantly parading himself in the media, giving interviews to defend their bad decision-making, inserting themselves in situations that they do not belong, and constantly ridiculing the community that pays him and that he does not agree with. He has proven to be incapable of fulfilling his job requirements and responsibilities. Some examples include overseeing and managing department heads and staying informed of deficiencies within those departments, like knowing that the CCAC cremation unit has been broken for two months. Incapable of keeping long-term local employees and having an extremely high employee turnover rate at all employment levels, and incapable of hiring qualified, experienced candidates for key positions. Inability to maintain community assets, like the water gardens, which resulted in $9 million in repairs. Incapable of maintaining a balanced budget, and inability to cut back spending by putting the city in astronomical debt via certificates of obligation that have increased by approximately $100 million in his tenure alone. Incapable of transparency by refusing to fulfill public information requests in the time allotted at reasonable cost to the requesters, resulting in a change of legislation that is being presented in Austin today. Epic failure of population growth in six years. No one is moving here. Inability to find alternative water resources until the 11th hour, when forced in passing a one-sided drought contingency plan, well into stage-three drought restrictions. Inability to keep an open dialogue with community partners like homeless, animal care, and environmental advocates. Direct or indirect involvement of degrading an elected official during a medical, a medical emergency. This is just to name a few. It is time for us to move on as a city. Talk to your constituents. They agree. Have the day you deserve.
Thank you, Ms. Caballero. Eli McKay.
Mayor and Council, my name is Eli McKay, and I live in beautiful uptown Corpus Christi, District One. So as I've said before, and most of you already know, I have the luxury of watching every meeting that you have in its entirety, and I haven't missed one for over three years. I'm often in disagreement with the decisions that you make when it comes to defunding quality-of-life programs, like libraries, parks, homeless services, or when y'all recklessly fund the urban sprawl that is quite, placing every department on a rack, stretching some of them to their breaking point. But last week in the budget workshop, I was not only embarrassed for our city, I was enraged. I was saddened. I was enraged by the misinformation and lack of empathy shown by our city manager. I was enraged and saddened by the lack of self-awareness, cluelessness, and what I could only perceive as racism from an at-large council member. It seems to me that they both need a history lesson, a geography lesson, and maybe a math tutor. The fact that Hillcrest and Washington Coles are not vibrant neighborhoods that they once were now is a product of decades of decisions made by the city, the state, and big industry. First to box them in and then to force them out. These decisions were undeniably based on racial and environmental injustice, and to now regard those neighborhoods as something less than neighborhoods adds horrible insult to decades of relentless injury. The new parks in the North Side will not only serve hundreds of residences in the Hillcrest and Washington Coles neighborhoods, but they will serve thousands of residents in the West Side and Uptown areas that have also been grossly neglected. So many parks in the West Side and Uptown have been intentionally stripped of their amenities as a tactic to detour unhoused folks from using the public space, which makes those parks unusable for everyone. I personally can't sit by and watch my neighbors be disrespected, and I have, you know, in these times, I've made a personal commitment to call out racism, xenophobia, and homophobia anytime that I see it, whether I am at the library board meeting, here in council chambers, or just out walking my dog. We all have the chance to be better than our parents were. Please remember that you represent all of the people who live here, not just those who share your worldview or income bracket. And please think before you speak. If you can't do that, at least close your mouth and work on your listening skills instead. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McKay. Adam Rios.
Adam Rios, Corpus Christi, Texas. Want to take a quick moment to share some solidarity with that young man and to financially support the project that you heard earlier concerning Billwitt Park. Checks can be addressed to Troop 3, Care of Tracking Station Project, PO Box 661, Corpus Christi, Texas. PO Box 661, Corpus Christi, Texas, 78401. He didn't get to say that earlier, so I wanted to, I care about parks apparently as much as he does, so I wanted to share that with everybody. I also wanted to share something that is happening tomorrow. If you were unaware, Wednesday, May 14, at the Bay Jewel Center, my wife, as the executive director of the Ritz, is hosting the Mahjong Tournament. I'm proud to say that all the tables have been sold out, but there's plenty of opportunity to still buy raffle tickets that you can get online or via social media. This should be a big event. It's going to raise more money than it did last year and get us one day closer to the ultimate goal, which is to have the Ritz open. I have two minutes left. I wanted to just share something personal, which is my approach to things. I had a great conversation this past Saturday, and it just reminded me of something. This past Sunday was Mother's Day. 16 years ago, I had to wake up in a world for the first time without my mother in it. And so I had to adjust to live in a world without the person who, although my father gave me a bloodline and culture, she gave me hope and faith, and she was a real advocate for the community. And I'd written something down, and it was based off one of my favorite artists, Nick Cave. And I just wanted to take a moment to share this with you in honor of my mother and anybody who's lost a mother, and why this community means as much as it does to me. It took the loss of my mother to teach me the preciousness of life and the essential goodness of people. It took this loss to reveal the precariousness of the world, of its very soul, to understand that some amongst me need help, to understand the importance of community. But unlike cynicism, she taught me hope and faith. And hope and faith are hard-earned. They make demands of us. They are not a neutral position. They are adversarial. They are warrior emotions that can lay waste to cynicism, each redemptive and compassionate. A simple act, as small as you like, such as teaching my son to read, singing him a song, tying his shoes, or promoting my wife's advocating the arts, sharing a sunset, or a dance to our favorite song, these are the things that keep the devil down in the hole, my son. They are emotions that say that the community and its inhabitants have value and are worth defending. They are worth believing in. In time, I've come to find that this is so. I hope everybody has a great day, and a happy Mother's Day belated to my mom. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rios. John Hendricks.
District 2, Corpus Christi. John Hendricks, Corpus Christi native, VFW post 2397, Quartermaster. Two items. Item one, New Bayview Cemetery. Couple weeks back, Ms. Rochelle, from Madam Mayor's office, informed me the city has set funds aside for a new Bayview's restoration. An old Russian phrase comes to mind to this 25-year-old, certified United States Army Russian linguist. That phrase is "Низкий поклон." I make a low bow to you. A low bow and many thanks I give to all who made this happen, to include our city manager, Mr. Zanoni, Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Roy, a couple of our new council ladies, Vaughn and Paxton, and my apologies to those deserving who I failed to mention. Item two, Feast of Corpus Christi, which is celebrated with rose petals, marching bands, and much fanfare in many cities of the world. The feast is an official holiday in many of those cities, just not in Corpus Christi. For some people, it is a commandment not to take God's name in vain. I think taking it lightly might be almost as bad. No other city has this blessed name, a name honoring an old Christian holiday and honoring our Lord and Savior. Maybe it would be better just to change our name rather than be taking it lightly. Maybe Valeroville or Exxonopolis? That's out of order. Each of you has a copy of my proposed resolution to help prevent us from taking our Lord and Savior's name lightly. Let's start by making Feast of Corpus Christi a big deal. Let's make it an official city holiday, a holy day, if you will. This year, it so happens, the Feast of Corpus Christi falls on Juneteenth, which is already a city holiday, as it should be everywhere in Texas. Madam Mayor, distinguished council members, this gives you more time to contemplate. Many thanks for bearing with me, and I yield.
Thank you, Mr. Hendricks. So this concludes our public comment for today, and we will move on to our briefings, Items 2, 3, and 4. Our first briefing is an update on Inner Harbor Water Treatment Campus Project.
Right, Mayor and members of the council. Brett is gonna, there's gonna be three presenters for this item.
Group presenters.
Three presenters, yes. Brett is gonna present an update on the Inner Harbor Desolization Plant. Then, he will be followed by Drew Molly. And this weekend, Councilwoman Paxton and I got clarification and better understand that at each of our council meetings, we will have a briefing on the alternative water projects in addition to D-SAL. So things like the E.V. Ranch Evangeline Wells Project. So Drew's gonna provide that briefing today in the context of Brett's presentation. And then going forward, we'll have a separate item on the agenda. Unless the briefing is minor, if there's not much update, I'll do it as part of my city manager's report. But I just want to provide that context for the council that, based on Councilwoman Paxton and other council members as well, there is a desire to have weekly briefings on alternative water projects that we're working on. So that'll come after Brett's presentation from Drew. And then another presenter today will be Alisa Olson, who's gonna present the draft communications plan for the Inner Harbor Desolization Plant. The mayor has been asking for that, as many council members. And so Alisa will go over some graphics and show you the, kind of the baseline approach for this communication plan. So with that, we're gonna turn it over to Brett, who will provide a second update, and we'll be doing these twice monthly going forward, just keeping the council up to date on critical path items related to the Inner Harbor Desolization Plant. Brett?
Thank you. So again, Brett Ben Hazel. I'm the Director of the Program Management Office. My team is charged with the management of the D-SAL project. So as Peter mentioned, we have a number of topics today. So I'll be going through a brief project update along with the timeline. I will touch on the near and far field modeling. That's gonna be done as part of this project. I'll go through a demonstration plan update and then touch on some future topics. I'll hand it off to Drew, who again, will talk about the alternative water supply project update. And then Alisa Olson will finish us off with a quick overview of the project website, and then also some of the communication campaigns specifically for the Inner Harbor Water Treatment Campus. Oh, I did wanna, sorry, I did want to quickly just point out, this image you see is a model that KiWIT has put together to show the current proposed layout of the treatment plant. It's still in draft, and we're still working through it, but it's just a high-level overview of what the plant may look like when we're complete.
Excuse me, Brett. So this presentation is not the one that's loaded in the system. That was a version from last Friday, so we're making copies, and we'll hand them out to the council. So what Brett's showing on the slide, I don't have in total in front of you, but we'll get those momentarily.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead, sir.
Yes, sir. Okay, so just a quick update on the project. Again, the project is three phases, with Phase 1 being broken down into two parts. One is Phase 1A, which we started last December, and it's near completion. June 1 is actually the completion of Phase 1A, and we're working through the planning, the pilot protocol, which is complete and submitted to TCEQ for review. And then we're working on the Basis of Design, which is basically like a programming document for the design of the project. Phase 1B started in April, and we started with just a minor contract amendment to move that particular phase along. There's some additional amendments we're gonna work through, and I'll touch on that on the next slide. And then the last two phases, we have construction, which is planned to begin at the beginning of 2026, and will continue on through the summer/fall time of 2028. And then we'll work into Phase 3, which is the operation and maintenance of the plant, which will be managed by KiWIT for one year, and then it will transition to the city. So again, we're in Phase 1A and 1B right now. So Phase 1A, again, is coming to completion, June 1. Out of that, we will have two major deliverables. One will be the Basis of Design Report, which again is in draft review right now by both Friesen Nickel, who is the city's owner's agent, and the city staff. And then we have a cost model, which will be submitted at the end of Phase 1A, and that cost model will be submitted to the city, as well as Friesen Nichols, to do a review. In addition, we do have an independent cost estimator that will be brought on to review it. So the month of June, we'll be going through the review of that, and then we would anticipate bringing the results of that to City Council in July, as part of one of my presentations. And that cost model will give us a very high-level budgetary range for the project in the early phases, because as you know, we're approximately 10% design, so it's a very early estimate. So it'll be a range that we're gonna work with. Again, in Phase 1B, we started in mid-April, and that amendment, that contract amendment that was issued, touched on a couple things. One, we brought on the technology supplier, Aquatec, to help with some of the submittal development, which is part of the Basis of Design development, as well as just early submittals. We put our place in line for two high-voltage transformers for the project. We're gonna do that often throughout Phase 1B to try to lock in some of the long-lead elements of the project, to make sure that we can secure it as we work through the project. We don't want anything to come in late and obviously push our project to the right, so we're trying to get ahead of that. And then lastly, we covered a little bit of GHD's design effort, both for modeling and then just general design for the diffusers. We do have some upcoming contract amendments. One will be for the demonstration plant. We've already executed a work directive for the KiWIT team, directing them to proceed with it while we work through the final details of the contract amendment, so they are working on that. We also have an upcoming amendment for the design and guarantee maximum price development. That'll be the design that takes us to 60%, and then they'll put together the guaranteed maximum price. That'll be at the end of this year. And then lastly, as I mentioned, we'll do some early work packages, mostly for some of those long-lead items. This is a high-level overview of the project schedule. As you can see on the bottom graph, we are in that design and GMP development phase, which is Phase 1A. At the beginning of next year, we'll transition to construction, which will take us through summer/fall timeframe of 2028. And then what's not shown is the Phase 3, which will be the operation and maintenance of the plant, which will be handled by KiWIT. So last week, and even prior, we have had a lot of discussion on modeling for this project, specifically what KiWIT's responsibilities are. So hopefully, we can answer all the questions that have come up recently. So first off, I want to point out that the modeling being done as part of this project is only for the Inner Harbor Ship Channel, only for the Inner Harbor Ship Channel. So the extents will take us as west as Flint Hills Resources, you know, past CC Polymers, and then on the east side, it'll take us about the mouth of the Harbor Bridge, or the channel near the Harbor Bridge. And I have a graphic after this slide that I can show you that will detail that a little bit further. So GHD is a subcontractor for KiWIT. They will be performing all the modeling, and the modeling is in support of the diffuser design for our discharge. So they're gonna be looking at the near and far field effects of the discharge, with the intent of meeting the TCEQ requirements set forth in our permit that was approved in March. That is the purpose of the design. It will not be looking at the impact that we're having on the bays and estuaries beyond the Ship Channel. The only considerations that those will have on the model is as an input into the Inner Harbor Ship Channel. So we're using that as a consideration for the model. Now, some of the characteristics that are gonna be evaluated are listed. The two that are, in particular, that I want to focus on are the dissolved oxygen and stratification. Those two are some of the key elements when we talk about hypoxia. So the modeling will look at the potential for hypoxia within the Inner Harbor Ship Channel, and those will be findings from the model. So if, for some reason, the model shows areas where there's concerns with hypoxia, that'll be something that'll be presented. You know, in March of this year, we talked about submitting the results of the model within two months. We will be submitting the model in May. GHD will be submitting it, but then we will go into a review period. So we expect to have our review complete and ready by the end of June, and then in July, we'll come back and present those findings. Here is an overall view of the total model domain. So if you look at the gridded area in white, that is everything west of the discharge, and then the blue-gridded area is everything east of the discharge. So we're modeling approximately 7.2 miles west of the discharge and about 1.4 miles east of the discharge. All of those yellow circles and the names, you know, like Corpus Christi Polymers, Flint Hills Resources, those are all inputs and outputs of the channel. So those are all gonna be input into the model and used as part of the results. Next, I want to touch on the demonstration plant. So the demonstration plant is something that is part of the TCEQ requirement for permitting, and it will help, it allows us to demonstrate that the final plant will be able to provide high-quality drinking water. It also affords us the opportunity to test out some of the membranes in the treatment process. We're looking to start this, the actual construction, which will include the installation of the equipment for the plant, as well as the discharge line from the plant site, which if you look at the image on the left, the area that is circled, that is where we're gonna put the demonstration plant. And we're going to take every, the product of that plant to the Broadway Wastewater Treatment Plant, which is a little bit east of this site. So we're gonna start construction in June. We will start the actual operation in July/Agust timeframe, and that's really gonna be getting the plant running optimized and to a steady state. And once we get it to that steady state, and we're ready to operate it for a continuous 30 days, which is the TCEQ requirement, we're anticipating that to start in September/October timeframe. So we'll run it for 30 days continuous, and then when that's complete, we'll decommission the plant, we'll produce a feasibility report and submit that to TCEQ. It's one of the requirements of the permit. I'm gonna show a little video here, and this video is a, the KiWIT team has put together a little model of what the final plant will approximately look like, and I'll kind of talk through the different process that we have. And I think I gotta do it one more time. Maybe the technical team can assist. Okay, so we have multiple processes. So this is an overview of the plant. It's located on the Port property. So the step one is, we're gonna take seawater out of the Inner Harbor Ship Channel. We're gonna send it over to the dissolved air flotation system. That's actually gonna take out the majority of the solids, and it's also going to inject oxygen into the system. After it leaves that process, it's gonna go over to the ultrafiltration, which will remove more of the impurities, and then it's gonna push that clean water over to our reverse osmosis, and that is where we're actually gonna be taking out all the salt. And then we'll have two discharges from that. We'll have one that is pure water, free of salt, and then we'll have what we call brine, which is gonna be the higher-concentrated water. which is going to be the higher-concentrated water with higher concentrations of salt. Both of those streams will then be mixed back together and sent to the Broadway Wastewater Treatment Plant. The other elements you see there, one is the testing lab. They're going to have continuous testing throughout the process. The Kiwit team and their subcontractors, et cetera, will be doing tests throughout the process. And then we also, we don't have a permanent power solution on-site. That could be done in a timely manner. So we're bringing out generators and electrical support systems to power all of the equipment for the duration of the plants on-site. So that's a high-level overview of the plant. At the end, if we need to come back and walk through it, we can. Oh, apologize. Lastly, just want to go through some of our future topics. As Peter mentioned before, we're going to continue doing the briefings twice a month. Our next plan briefing is June 10. We'll have the topics ahead of that. I don't have them set for you right now, but we, again, we're open to suggestions. If you guys have things that you'd like us to focus on, we can absolutely modify the presentations. We do have a design workshop planned for city staff, Kiwit, and Freezer Nichols this week in Lenexa, Kansas. We're actually going to be there, starting Wednesday through Friday, to look at the Basis of Design Report. We're going to go into great detail on that report. And then, June 17, we're actually bringing a gentleman named LeFwin Clark. He works for the Water Collaborative Association. He's an expert in the progressive design build, CMR-type deliveries for projects of this scale. He's going to come do a presentation focusing on progressive design build and the guaranteed maximum price development. So we'll have him here June 17. And then, again, we just have a couple upcoming deliverables that we're going to work through. Next, we're going to bring Drew up, and he's going to talk through the alternative water supply.
Okay, I think we have one question or comment. Councilman Kent, too?
Yeah.
Quick question. How much are we paying for advertising right now?
For advertising?
Yeah.
So Elisa, when she goes through her presentation, she can talk through that, sir.
It just kind of concerns me, because we don't have a guaranteed price yet, right? So like, we don't even know if other council members are going to vote for this or not, and we're just spending money that, you know, on something that we don't know the guaranteed price is, you know? I'm just, my opinion, you know? If the guaranteed price is $1.5 billion, I mean, that's a lot of money that we're going to, we have to vote for, and, you know, I think we had that discussion already. So I just, just a little concern about the price.
Absolutely.
Of the advertising, of course.
Yes, sir.
Spending money right now. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Drew, you're up.
Okay. Good afternoon. Drew Molly, Chief Operating Officer. So there are a lot of projects that we're considering right now in a very compressed amount of time. So given this extremely large effort, we have engaged with an outside consultant firm to help us with these evaluations. The consultant team that we selected is Garver, and we gave them a notice to proceed on May 5, two weeks ago. We've met with this team several times in the last week, providing them with project-specific data for each of the water supply projects that I'm going to outline here in a second. So the first one on the list is the Oasis River Groundwater Well Project, and a total of four wells have been installed, with one totally completed today, and then three others that are in some form of development. So the first well, the permanent, so the first well, Oasis Well, Groundwater Well, number one, we've actually had the permanent natural gas generator delivered to that well. It's been installed, and that well has been successfully running. In fact, we started it up yesterday. We produced about 1,100 gallons per minute, which is equivalent to about 1 million and a half gallons a day. Well number two, the permanent pump is going to be set in that well in about two weeks. It's been pump-tested at 2 million gallons a day. Well number three is, the pump is actually being designed. It has the permanent pump. The well has been test-pumped at 2 million gallons a day. Well number four, the well has been drilled, and test pumping is supposed to start next week. Well number five is in the, it's actually being drilled now, so we actually have a drill rig out there continuing to work and drill. And then, well number six, we're actually going to be starting drilling activity on that well next week. So lots of progress on these wells. Another thing I wanted to update the council on is the fact that the temporary bed-and-banks permit application was submitted yesterday to the TCEQ alongside with an administrative check that was hand-delivered to them. A letter to the governor's office was sent yesterday. A copy of that has been provided to you. The letter to the governor's office was just reminding the governor that we have met with them, with the TCEQ, our state legislative delegation. Everybody is in lockstep with the fact that this is a short-term water supply that makes a lot of sense for us. And so that letter was sent to the governor's office yesterday. Because the Oasis River Groundwater Project helps other cities, like cities that have dependency even more so on Lake Corpus Christi than we do, cities like Mathus, Alice, Beeville, especially Mathus and Beeville, they have expressed a great interest in this project. They recognize that some of the water that we're putting in the rivers downstream of Wesley Seale Dam helps them. So we actually received a letter from the city of Mathus supporting this project that was sent to the governor's office. So those types of efforts to work with our partners is certainly something that is important to not just us, but to the region in terms of that solidarity. As I mentioned last week during my presentation, part of this project that we believe has a lot of viability is Phase 1, putting the water into the river on a temporary basis, and then Phase 2, exploring opportunities to utilize this water long-term as water that would be a source of water for a future Brackish RO plant. This project is being included in the Region N Water Plan. That allows us to have some flexibility in the future if we were to allow ourselves to get some funding from the State Water Implementation Fund for Texas, which is otherwise known as SWIFT, through the Texas Water Development Board. So that, so those are all the updates in terms of the Oasis River Groundwater Project. I'm going to ad-lib just a little bit, because there's a couple other things I want to brief the council on in the community, which is the Evangeline Project. So the Evangeline Project is one that we are all familiar with. We've heard some of the folks from the Evangeline present at a water workshop not too long ago. We continue to evaluate this project, especially now that we have some help on an outside consultant team to look at this project, as well as the other ones that we're looking at. We have a meeting tomorrow. We're going to be talking to the Evangeline folks with our legal team, our technical team, talking about things like transport permits, surface rights, and then just kind of more specific questions about the ownership of the groundwater itself. I will say that this project has already been included in the Region N Plan. It's been in the plan for quite some time, so it is eligible for SWIFT funding through the Texas Water Development Board. The next project I want to just mention quickly is the EV Ranch Project. So, in fact, we met with the EV Ranch folks today. We had a, we had a good discussion with them. In fact, the consultant team has just texted me a second ago, and they've already engaged with the project lead for the EV Ranch Project. So one other thing I want to mention with regards to the EV Ranch is that we believe in its viability. We believe it could be a potential regional source of groundwater. In fact, we've added this project into the Region N Plan. So we've committed funding from our own sorts to advance this project into the Region N Plan, so that it could potentially be eligible for low-interest financing in the future from the Texas Water Development Board. As far as the South Texas Water Authority Project's concerned, I think last week we heard General Manager John Mades, he was here at the dais, talking about his commitment to being a partner and looking at ways to explore for the benefit of both the city and the South Texas Water Authority. We've shared his contact information with one of his engineers with our team, so they're engaged, talking about that potential project there. And that project being the project that Seven Seas, so Seven Seas is actually developing a test well as we speak. And so there's, there's some activities going on there that we're going to reach out to and get more information on. As far as the reclaimed water project, you know, that's another project that you've heard about. We talked about it at the water workshop. City Council approved that on April 8. We're continuing to advance that project. It's also a project that we are putting into the Region N Plan, so there should be a funding opportunity if there so chooses to be a project that has viability. We'll have that identified. And we've committed funds to have that project evaluated, just like we've committed funds to have the EV Ranch and the Oasis River Groundwater Project committed to the Region So, so with that said, I know that the city manager has mentioned, we are committed to providing weekly updates, at least in the form of a memo, so the council is aware of the updates and the project schedule that we're implementing here. And, and so with that said, I think I'm going to.
Yeah, can I just add a couple things to Drew's presentation? So regarding the, the South Texas Water Authority, Councilman Hernandez and Seven Seas, we, I saw Judge Madrid last week, and following up from a prior request to his, I am scheduling a meeting, as he requested, with him, the mayor, myself, Drew, and Commissioner or GM, General Manager Mades, to hear about their project and hear some of the, some of the ideas that Judge Madrid, the county judge of Clayburn County, so that's coming up. Regarding the wells project, that would produce about 10 to 12 million ultimately at full buildout. So that's about 1/10 of our water supply today, just to give you some context on it. And when Drew talks about we're running them, it's allowed right now without the permit. We run them just for a little bit of time to test the equipment, and then we have to turn it off, because we don't have the permit. However, the application, as Drew said, was sent yesterday, submitted yesterday, and we think about two weeks or so, two to three weeks? Okay, maybe a little.
We're thinking it's, yeah, two weeks.
Two weeks?
For a review.
For a review?
And then hopefully.
An answer, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so about two to three weeks on an answer on that, which would be great. Well, it's called a temporary permit. It does have a three-year span. So we can use this temporary permit, so to speak, for three years, if granted. Those additional letters, we want to thank the city of Mathus and Beeville and Alice, who are sending endorsement letters to the one we sent, the governor, to say, "We want this project as well." And so they know that regionally, we're cooperating. And, and then Evangeline, and we're working with Garver, both on Evangeline and the EV Ranch Project. We've met this morning with Dr. Mintz. The key thing on this is we're working on a June 2 kind of timeline to have some initial business feasibility, so that on the 10th of June, we can present that to the city council. So it's an aggressive schedule, but Garver is geared up with staff augmentation. And that's the importance on that, is that there is, we're working under a timeline. So June 2, we hope to have some business case material developed that we can present to the council on June 10.
Thank you, Peter. Yes, sir. Okay, with that said, I think I'm turning this over to Elisa Olson.
Councilwoman Vaughn?
Oh.
I have a couple of questions. So on that contract, the permit for three years, after that permit goes out, you could go back and get it reissued?
Yes, we could reissue it.
Okay, I'm going to ask you another question. I've already talked to you about this, and the reason I ask you is because people are asking. We're in Stage 3. They know we're getting more water. They see that we're getting more from Mary Roads. So I ask you this, how you're counting, and how much were we using? Why can we not count the 10 MGDs from Formosa and what we've gotten? Can you explain that to the public?
You bet. So the Formosa water is, you really can't add that on top of what we already have. The Formosa water is to make sure that we don't run out and we don't overpump the eastern supplies throughout the rest of the year. And so frankly, there are some vulnerabilities on both the Colorado River, and there are vulnerabilities even on Lake Texana. What I mean by that is, is that because the drought has impacted not just our region, but the Colorado Basin and the La Vaca Navidad, the La Vaca Navidad Basin, which is where we get Lake Texana water, they have not provided us with the interruptible water. They typically do that every year. And so as an insurance policy, we've contracted that additional Formosa water, which is basically a guaranteed 10,000 acre feet of water, to make up for the water that we're likely not going to get from Lake Texana. It's also, Formosa is also an insurance policy in the event that the Colorado River curtails us. And the Colorado River is one that's also under a lot of stress. LCRA has indicated that they're in, not indicated, they are in Stage 2 water restrictions, drought restrictions. And so essentially, that Formosa water is to help us ensure that we can get through the entire year and take our full Schedule 4 pumping throughout the year.
Okay, so what has to happen to get out of Stage 3? Because you said, I think we were using 120 MGD before. So what has to happen to get out of Stage 3?
Well, the short answer is, is that to get out of Stage 3, we have to exceed 30% in our combined reservoir. So Choke Canyon, Lake Corpus Christi, added together, needs to be above the 30% threshold. If we get out of that, we're out.
That's about double the amount of water that's in there today?
Correct.
It's about 14, you know, 14% today, so you'd have to double that. We would have to double the height of both the combined Lake Corpus Christi and Choke Canyon.
Okay, so it's going to be a while.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Councilman Hernandez?
Yeah, thank you, Peter, for answering some of the questions I was going to ask about the South Texas Water Authority. I think there's some real opportunity there, considering what they're planning. Like to know specific details as to how much volume could, we could get from that opportunity. It's very similar to how Alice is doing their, did their opportunity. You know, I talked to their city manager recently, and, you know, their, their cost on their water from their D-SAL facility is $395 per 1,000 gallons. So it, you know, I don't think it'll be that low, considering the construction cost elevation. But considering they do already have a transmission line that goes between us and Clayburn County, there might be a lot less infrastructure needed in order to gain that water. And also, specific timelines on what kind of timeline they could get that water to us. It might be advantageous in the sense that, kind of like how Evangeline can pump right into the Mary Roads Pipeline, they can, they can provide that water that way well. And it's, since it's another entity that's doing this, I think it's, it would fit within what you're looking at. All right? Thank you.
We'll keep you posted on that meeting, Councilman. We asked, I asked it be scheduled yesterday. I'm not sure if it is yet, but it should be within the next two weeks.
I think it's next week.
What's that? Next week?
I believe it's the end of next week, but I think they're still working on it.
Okay, we'll keep Councilman Hernandez informed.
Councilman Kent, too?
Drew, how long does it take to get a permit back for the water wells?
So we submitted the permit application yesterday.
Okay.
We have been told by TCEQ that we should expect about a two-week review, assuming that there's no RFI, Request for Information, from them. Then they would advertise the permit. I believe it's for 30 days, but they have to advertise it publicly, and then at that point, the permit would be secured. So we're estimating permit timeframe would be end of the month of June.
Okay, so it'll be pretty quick.
I hope so, yeah.
Hopefully, they're not listening to us, but what happens if we just pump water and it's at the lake right now?
Only at night.
Just, just asking. We need water, so what's, what could happen?
Well, I will tell you this. I, you know, we want to be good stewards and work closely with TCEQ, because they are a regulator and they do a lot good. So I would like to think that's why we've engaged the governor's office, because the governor has helped us immensely with the declaration of an emergency situation with the drought. And I will say that there's been a lot of really good synergy, not just with our council, of course, but with the electeds at the state level, right? So they have been big supporters of this. And the, even the TCEQ, all the way up to the executive director, who I, I was in touch with yesterday, just, you know, letting them know that this application was coming, the letter to the governor was coming, so there were no surprises. I think there's been a really good communication line in all aspects of this project. So I think that the TCEQ is very committed to making sure that we get this permit. They understand that, you know, we are absolutely going to protect the watershed that we're putting this water into, and this is a good.
The permit for all of them, right?
Yes, sir. It's an aggregated permit, yes, sir.
I was thinking it'll take like six months, two years, something crazy, but a month is not too bad.
Maybe normal circumstances, it might take longer, but I, given the situation we're in, I think they're very committed to us.
I said we wait for the permit, then. Thank you.
Good call.
Yeah, TCEQ has given us kind of preferential treatment, TCEQ is, so.
Yes, sir.
Also, on the brief, in the memo that we sent this past Friday, Councilwoman Vaughn asked the price spent per date for the wells, so that was included. I forget the number, was it 6 million or something? 6 million. So to date, for the dollars spent to date for the five or six wells and the generator and some of the pumps is about 6 million. The nice thing about this project, though, is once the infrastructure's in, the only cost we have is for the generators run on natural gas and minor maintenance from the team, so we don't have to pay. So we don't have to pay any water royalties or water rights. This, it's water that we can pump, and that infrastructure will be well-maintained and have a, you know, 10 to 30-year lifespan on some of it. So the price is initial, but after that, it's basically free water.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, yes, ma'am.
Okay, Councilman Scott?
I thought Carolyn brought a great point, and it made me think about firm yield and the slides that I'm sure clearly communicated, the new firm yield, which I've since forgotten. I think that's the backdrop for all of this, is what did, what have we always thought our firm yield was? What does our firm yield look like for the last five years? And then I don't know if there's somebody out there that can help us extrapolate what we think the next 20 years are going to be. Because if our firm yield was 190, 190,000?
189,000 round up to 190,000 acre feet is what the firm yield, and that was adjusted back after the record drought. So it used to be higher than that. And then there was basically a rescinding of some water that we had on Lake Texana, because there was, I think it was Formosa actually, had some water that was rescinded from us. And so the firm yield was adjusted, and I know Esteban Ramos would know more about this, but the details are that it was lowered.
Remember that. So that 190 is all combined? I'm most curious about the lakes. What I'm curious about is the two lakes' firm yield. And what did it used to be? Kind of what, I don't know how to ask this, right? But what's it been over the last five years, four years? And does that mean we're going to change that number going forward? Because certainly, if the next five years, look at the last five years, then that number is profoundly less, you know? Which goes into the ability to get to 30%, right? So on a normal year, we can kind of guess, if it rains like it did in, I don't remember, I don't know, 2016, then we should be there fairly quickly. But if it rains like it did last year, it's just never going to move. And so could that, maybe the next time we visit, can you just, as a backdrop, here are the lakes' firm yield, here's our overall firm yield. I realize that we lost some to Formosa, I remember that. But I don't really feel like I understand what we think our current firm yield is, because I do think that taints all of these conversations. And it provides backdrop, saying, you know, it's the three-legged stool, right? We need it all. So that was number one. Number two, I'd be curious as to what the Alice permitting timeline is. I don't know if that's public data, when they first made their permit, or when they hired their first, whatever that is, if that's possible. And if you, if you make water for yourself, like Alice is doing for Alice, is that a different permitting process as opposed to, you know, making water and shipping it to another county? Does that change?
Well, yes. If they were going to transport water across a groundwater conservation district boundary, they would have to get a transport permit, but they're keeping that water in, in the district. So they have a couple of permits. They have a discharge permit that they have to attain, because, you know, they're taking, they're desalting, that's what they're doing. They're desalting groundwater. And when they desalt, they have to put it somewhere. And so they put it in a creek that has to be permitted by TCEQ. And so they had to get that permit. They also have to get a permit from TCEQ just to put the water into their distribution system. And so right now, as I understand, and talking to the city manager of Alice, they're getting closer to getting that permit from TCEQ to actually put the water in their distribution system at the City of Alice. I think they're expecting that. Last I heard, I think it was like in the June timeframe.
So the difference would be, you'd have to get a permit to move the water outside the groundwater conservation district. That has nothing really to do with the TCEQ, that's just, can we, can we move water out of our district? And so we would need to get that from, on the, what, the Evangeline?
Yes, and EV Ranch as well.
And EV?
Rush country.
We wouldn't need to do it for the Seven Seas, as we'll call it. We wouldn't need to get one, or somebody would if Alice participated, but I don't see that. Okay, so how long does it take to permit?
Say, I'm sorry?
How long would it take Seven Seas to permit their project? I wonder, I'm curious as to how soon we could get that water, whether, let's just say they double their supply, what is that, you know, what, how long does it take to get that water to Corpus? You don't have to answer it today, but I think that's a relevant question, is if they do increase their capacity, and we are able to change the direction of the pipe, how soon can we get that water? Now, I guess if you change the direction of the pipe, you couldn't put our two, it's 2 million gallons a day that's going south?
Correct.
Which is interesting, I guess. So if South Texas Water Authority gave up their 2 million gallons a day, that would add to our, right, supply also.
Right.
Because you couldn't, right? You couldn't move it south and.
This is, it's a bit complicated, because I think South Texas Water Authority is wanting to make sure that they have multiple sources of water. So I believe in conversations with them, they, there's a contract that we are, you know, working on, because their contract expires at the end of the year. And they clearly want to stay connected to the city for our water, because it's a, it's another source of water for them.
Yes, that, and Councilman, just to, just to, I don't have the number of months or years, but it's not a quick turnaround, because they have to build a reverse osmosis, reverse osmosis-type treatment plant. So you have to bring power in, build the, construct the plant, get the permits to discharge the brine, if you will. So it's not months, it's probably a year, years.
Absolutely, yes.
Yeah, it's a longer lead-type project, just so everybody knows. But it's one look worth looking into. They, we know Seven Seas is serious about it, and Judge Madrid is as well, so we're going to look at that next week.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Campos?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted the, did you already mention the timeline? What is the timeline for the reclaimed water infrastructure project with Garver? I mean, it just says approved by city council on April the 8th. What is the timeline for that? That's the project that I'm, I mean, I'm glad that the groundwater, I mean, my gosh, we're able to get all this water with, what, under $8 million? Something like that?
Six.
Is it? Under six, yeah.
Well, I think it's six.
So anyway, so I'm trying to see if we can, where we're at on the reclaimed water. If you could give us a timeline, did you already share that, or you don't know that?
I don't have a specific timeline. We literally just got them noticed to proceed it up to start. So I can, I can bring back some information that would suggest or show kind of, you know, the schedule and what we've anticipated coming forward. But, you know, it's about a 12-month project to move this forward. We have to do source water characterization studying, that takes, takes time to do that. In other words, we're going to all the wastewater plants, or at least five out of the six, and we're basically, excuse me, testing the water as part of that characterization. And that is a regulatory requirement, so TCEQ's going to ask for that information.
Okay, okay. Would that, I mean, I know that, you know, not just me, but I hopefully, I think some of the other, you know, water customers are anxious to see how fast we could get this project here. So anyway, I'm hopeful.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. I think that's all the questions and comments, Drew.
Okay.
What, do we have a third, this is the third part?
There's one.
Okay, so what we're going to do is, we're going to hear this third part, and then we're going to break for lunch, and I'll pass the consent agenda before we break for lunch. We'll come back and then finish off with grant activity update and the briefing on the 89th Texas legislation, or legislative session.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having me. My name's Alisa Olson, and I'm the Director of Communications. Today, I'm going to talk to you about three separate, but very much related, education campaigns that we're currently running at this time. And Councilman, I'm happy to address your question about cost as soon as I go through them, so that it'll make sense. So the first thing I wanted to share with you today is that we have an Inner Harbor Water Treatment Campus website. Many of you may have seen it, but if you haven't, there it is. For those in the audience who are watching on the live stream, the website address is But I do believe each of you was handed a little card with the website address and a QR code on it, so that you can take a look at it in your own time. It's a great website. It has a whole lot of informative content about the project, about why the coastal bend needs seawater desalination, about frequently asked questions, which we frequently update as new questions arise. Project timelines are included, project details, there's information about the procurement process there. We also have a couple of videos on the homepage of that website. One of them is a real high-level, how D-SAL works kind of, kind of video, kind of a desalination 101 for people who may be new to the technology concept. And we have a deeper dive video, which was our recently published Inside City Hall segment, where we interviewed some experts who were talking about the various environmental aspects of the project. And of course, the project presentations that Brett is sharing with you every other week are also added to this website. So today, I'm going to talk to you about three distinct, but very much related, education campaigns that we are working on. The first is a local education campaign, all about the Inner Harbor Water Treatment Campus. The second is a statewide education campaign with the Texas Tribune. And the third is a local education campaign focused on the city's four-tiered approach to water security. And so what are, what are our goals with all of this advertising and all of these campaigns? Well, they're to educate and inform all of the various audiences about what the City of Corpus Christi is doing to secure water, to educate and inform residents and the community about the Inner Harbor Water Treatment Campus, to ensure that people can find the details if they want to dive deep into those details, and clarify facts that they may have heard. And also, through the websites that each campaign has associated with them, we want to make sure that people have the ability, a mechanism, to ask questions and get their questions answered. So I'll dive right into the first campaign. The first, as I mentioned, is a local education campaign promoting the Inner Harbor Water Treatment Campus. The audience for this one is residents in the local community. The campaign includes paid Facebook and Instagram advertising. Now, why paid, you might think? So let me just go ahead and answer that question. Because paid reaches a whole lot more people. So when we do a post on our city Facebook or Instagram account, the people that see it are the smaller number of people that follow us. Whereas with paid, we can extend a geographic digital boundary around all of the area that we provide water to, and we can show those ads to all those people that might be looking, whether they follow our individual page or not. So that's why we do paid, it reaches more people. We also, through this campaign, are doing two things with Google. We're doing paid Google search ads as well as Google display ads. Now, all of you have probably seen search ads. What that means is when someone is typing something in and they're looking for something, you see a sponsored result at the very top of the page. That's what we're doing. We're making sure if there, there are people that are interested in our project, that when they type something into Google, that we come up right at the top, and they go to that Inner Harbor Water Treatment Campus website, and they get all the information that they need. Google display is a little different. What that is, is banner ads. Google has a network of hundreds of websites where they'll let you put your banner ads. And so, for example, you might see them on Yahoo News, or CNN, or Fox News, or some completely different on-news website, right? There are hundreds of websites, and so people in the region, again, geo-fenced around the area where we serve water, where we serve people with water, they'll be seeing our ads virtue of looking at the sites that they do for news and entertainment and information every day. And we'll have a radio campaign that's a part of this contract. So our Google search ads actually already started. They began on April 1st. The remaining digital content will begin in the next two weeks, and the radio ads will begin on June 2nd. So this is what it looks like. So the campaign tagline is "What Fills Your Cup?" And through our "What Fills Your Cup?" campaign, we show how having access to clean, available water keeps all of our cups full, both literally and figuratively. So what fills your cup? Clean, safe drinking water. What fills your cup? Solving a regional water crisis. What fills your cup? A drought-proof solution proven worldwide. What fills your cup? Flowing taps and a healthy base. So that's the gist of it. You get people's attention, they click on the ad, they go to the Inner Harbor Water Treatment Campus website, and they're able to read all the details. That's the first one. The second one, I think you may have heard of a little bit about last week. This is a statewide education campaign through the Texas Tribune. If you've never heard of the Texas Tribune, or you're not familiar with it, it is a very well-read online publication with an audience of elected officials and business and community leaders across the state. Now, this campaign was a strategic decision. We launched it in January, and it is exactly the length of the Texas Legislative Session. And what we wanted to do with this campaign was complement and amplify all of the good work that our mayor and council members and business leaders and city staff are doing when they go to Austin, by making sure that people who are reading this publication are seeing the message that we're delivering in person over and over and over. This campaign featured website ads on the Texas Tribune website. It featured a sponsored, what they call a sponsored post, which is the paid article that you saw last week, that was on the Texas Tribune website. And it included a lot of ads in their email newsletters blasts, which they have lots of them, and tens of thousands, tens of thousands of people read them, excuse me. So far, this campaign is still running, it runs till the end of this month. So far, we've had over 100,000 impressions on the website. Now, what an impression is, is it's, it's one set of eyeballs on an ad, right? So an ad comes up, we count that as an impression if it's displayed to a person. So we've had over 100,000 website impressions, more than 80,000 impressions on the email campaigns that go out to their subscribers, and over 900 clicks on those ads. That means 900 people who may not have ever visited the Inner Harbor Water Treatment Campus website clicked on it and visited that website. So we're super excited about this campaign. And the third campaign that I wanted to talk to you about today hasn't quite begun yet, although we have designed the collateral and purchased the advertising space, and we're about to start rolling it out. And this is all focused on its local, here in the Corpus Christi region, and it is all focused on the city's four-tiered approach to water security. So the audience, again, here is residents and local community. It, the campaign includes a campaign webpage, which is not live yet, but what you're seeing on the screens is a mock-up of what that webpage is going to look like. It includes another Inside City Hall video, where we interview some city staff and experts on all the different, about all the different things that we're doing to ensure water security in the Corpus Christi region. It, of course, includes a media relations strategy, where we put out press releases, and we schedule interviews for leaders, and we make sure that people are out there in the media, being interviewed and talking about the project. Again, this will include paid Facebook and Instagram ads for the same reason. You can just reach so many more people by doing it that way. And some television commercials and radio commercials. And my apologies, but I left one off. We also have two billboards that'll be launching. This campaign, like I said, is all in development. We're almost ready to go, and it will launch on June 2nd in a couple of weeks. This is what the creative looks like for that particular campaign. You know, the shape of a billboard, and the shape of a postcard, and the shape of a digital ad, they're all different, but this is generally it. So "Securing Water: Sustaining Tomorrow," "The City's Four-Tierred Approach to Water Security." And we're listing the four tiers as seawater desalination, pipeline expansion, lakes and reservoirs, and groundwater wells. Now, we're intentionally not using any water jargon, right? We're trying to keep the language simple, so that the most number of people possible can understand what we're talking about. Again, when you click on these ads, or you see a commercial on TV, there will be context included with it, or if they click on it, it will go to a website. So I'm just going to go ahead and proactively answer the councilman's question about cost. There are three, three separate campaigns that were launched at three separate times. So the Texas Tribune campaign was $30,000 for that entire duration of the Texas Legislative Session. The "What Fills Your Cup?" campaign is $49,995, and that will take us all the way through the end of this fiscal year. So all of that advertising is included in that, as well as the creative that you saw. And the four-tiered water approach is approximately $43,000. And the reason I'm giving you an approximate on that last one, as opposed to a hard number, is because we actually already have purchased the billboards and the radio and the TV, and we're using them for our stage-three education campaign to let the community know about the drought in stage-three. And what we're going to do for the remainder of the fiscal year, the remainder of the contracts, is just drop in some additional advertising into that same campaign. So we had to do a little math, right? We had to take, take what we had, what had already run, figure out the rest, and divide it in half, and that's why it's an approximation. And I, absolutely, and I'm happy to take any additional questions that you have.
Thank you, thank you.
Councilwoman Compos.
Thank you, Elise, and thank you, Councilwoman Cantu, for asking that question. I think I quickly totaled it to $123,000.
Yes, ma'am, roughly.
Roughly. On what? Propaganda? Propaganda, that's the way I see it. There's no reason for us to be, to go out there and, you know, sell this project that may not even come to fruition, because we don't know yet. We don't know what the final cost is going to be, and that is going to be the final determination for this council. So to me, it's inappropriate, and I, you know, I hope that the rest of the council feels this way, that we need to quit this. This is horrible. I don't approve of it. I don't accept it, and again, just terrible waste of money.
Thank you for your feedback.
Yeah. Councilwoman Paxson.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of questions over the whole presentation. I'll try to keep it short, and I'll start with the communication side since you are graciously still here. Just going over the slides and what you've articulated, it looks like to me, Campaigns 1 and 2 are exclusively pretty much about the Inner Harbor Desal Plant.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Which is the 50 and 30,000, so that's 80,000. And then, it's not until we get to 3 and 4 that we look at all of the water solutions.
The third campaign is about all of the water solutions.
So I say the same thing to any of the department heads that I work on, on any of the items that we deal with, regardless of the department, regardless of the industry, regardless of what the item is. To me, similar to what Councilmember Compos just said, we just spent $80,000 to advertise something that we haven't deliberated final approval for. I realize that you are executing on what you've been asked to do, so I apologize that you're kind of wearing the target board right here, and I recognize that puts the staff in positions where they're having to follow mandates. But unfortunately, with the way the system is set up, this is my platform to explain my philosophy and whether or not I have questions, comments, or concerns with anything we're presented. So please understand, that's just the dynamic. So I have a little bit of a problem, and maybe Peter, I'll redirect that at you, since of course I recognize our PIO director isn't the one necessarily leading these charges. When we make the statement on Campaign 1, solving a regional water crisis with 30 million gallons a day. 30 million gallons a day doesn't solve a regional water crisis. It certainly helps our quota of water, but 30 million gallons a day doesn't solve anything, which kind of puts me back to, it's not until we get to that third campaign that we're actually looking at a comprehensive solution for our water problem. So I feel like I've said this ad nauseam since I've gotten elected, is 30 million gallons doesn't solve a regional problem. That's why we do things like, every week, can we get an update on all of our water sources? It takes a collection. Our daily consumption's 100 million gallons a day. 30 million doesn't fit the bill. So I have some frustration, I'll say that. I have some frustration, being a part of a body that's saying we're solving a regional water crisis.
Ma'am, we can ditch that particular ad.
No, no, no. Go ahead and finish. Go ahead and finish. Thank you. When we're not looking at the comprehensive statement, and from what we just presented here, or what we received, is this stuff has been running since April 1. Even if we fixed it at this point in time, this is the philosophy, you know? It's hard for us sitting up here to say, you know, yes, 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 when it's very pigeonholed. And I hope that you're understanding my sentiment here. We have to, we have to make sure that the city of Corpus Christi recognizes the Inner Harbor Treatment Plant is one piece of the puzzle. It happens to be, right now, our most expensive piece, and arguably perhaps the most furthest along, but it is one piece of a full picture. I do not want to be a part of the city leadership that says this is our only solution, and we are capping ourselves and our future potential into one. And I am afraid that in trying to say, "Everybody support Inner Harbor, it's a great solution," that we're capping ourselves at a small potential, and I don't like that messaging.
Yeah. Councilwoman, so in this, in the, how we're set up as an entity, with the elections every two years, a massive project like this has been going on for 10 years, so there's an overlap in the council philosophy, right? We were told last council, we're way behind on a campaign, get a campaign going, help the community understand what this project is. That's what this is. So it comes from the prior council, then it's just part of the dynamic of this government, which is this change every two years, you know, because of the two-year nature of the council. We're working under the direction that we very clearly told to us, just as adamant as you're talking right now. The prior council talk was almost more adamant, saying, "You guys need a campaign. Where's your campaign?" So we've been working on the campaign, and we're delivering it. And it's the nature of the government, you know, it's the nature of the tier cycle, and there's elections, and there's term limits, and...
I understand that. I appreciate that, and I sympathize with that. But having all of us in this seat since January, and these ads going out in April, I feel like, especially with these Alternative Water Solution Updates Weekly being a huge priority to us, I feel like this council since January has made it very, I think, clear that we need a lot of water sources.
We do, and so that's the second point you raised, and I would say that the campaign, and Elisa can talk about the strategy, there's certain segments that we're trying to educate, and there's nothing wrong with educating the community, they've asked for it. But it's not just one egg in one basket, you know? We're not putting all of our eggs in one basket. We know, Drew just gave you an update, gave the council and the community an update, we have numerous sources. Nobody on this team has ever said, "We're going to just do one source, and that's it." The campaign, Elisa can talk to the strategy on the campaign. We know, and we've been saying it, as Councilman Scott has said it, it's not an "or," it's an "and." We need "ands." We need numerous water projects. That's why we're working on the wells, we're looking at E.B. Ranch, Evangeline, we're looking at South Texas Water Authority with Seven Seas, we're looking at desal, we're looking at reuse, and we're trying to get some rain.
So when I look at this communications campaign, number three.
Yeah.
"Securing Water: Sustaining Tomorrow." That's the phrase there. That, to me, is what the people need to see here. Austin needs to see future development, future investors, securing water for tomorrow. And it lists these four pillars down here that, to me, more comprehensively shows the picture of all of our efforts. I mean, we bug you guys constantly. Where are we at on the wells? Where are we at on all of this?
Right. This campaign is local. This is a local campaign. This is not Texas Tribune. This is local.
That's where I'm having a problem. Because if I need to invest in a city, and I'm thinking far, long-term, 30 million gallons, yes, it's an achievement, and it's historic, but we need to, this needs to be, oh, wow, Corpus Christi's doing not one, but multiple.
Good point. We can add that to the Texas Tribune.
Thank you, Councilwoman. So a few things. This campaign is critical. As he said, many councils, multiple councils ago, the decision was made by the majority to move desalination forward. To date, we have invested over $200 million. So, you know, my comment is today, why is this so late? That's my comment, is all of this is happening in June, right? And I'm being a little silly, but what I'm saying is, the decision has been made. Yes, there's going to be a vote to vote on, you know, a final, the guaranteed maximum price, but the decision has been made. We have spent over $200 million. Well, you know, an investment of over 200. So is this in line with what we are doing? Absolutely. And I have harped about it to no end, because when I get people asking, "Well, I don't know what y'all are doing," to your point, I believe my other comment was going to be, you know, great statewide, but, you know, that's cheerleading, that's great, and I don't have a problem with it. And I think everyone on this council needs to respect each other's stance. I don't care what side of the line you sit on, it's, there are people up here who 1,000% believe in desalination, and others that don't, and I think we need to respect that. That's what this council's about, is all sides of issues, many, many issues. So that said, this, in my opinion, I wish was out, you know, six months ago. Honestly, I have been harsh on that, because when people ask me, "What are you doing?" And I'll go, "I could recite it right here, because I've done it 1,000 times," or more. "Well, we're drilling wells along New Isis Bay, and that's going to garner blah, 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 blah." And we're doing the, you know, the pipeline, you know, we improved it at a very high cost, and that yielded us an extra 20 MGD, and that is priceless across the state of Texas. The governor is telling us, "Way to go, please keep going." Please keep what going? Being innovative. There is no other city in this state who is saying, "I can do this or that," outside of whatever their means is to get water. So I think, and I know it's, as you mentioned, Peter, you said it well, every two years, we have a new council, and we have to all work together to move us forward in 100 different directions, you know, with different topics. But this is a, this is a decade-old action. This has been in motion, and there is, I mean, I know you don't necessarily...
It's not missing the point.
I'm not missing the point.
It's not yes or no.
I know that.
It's four versus five.
Right. But what you're...
It's not yes or no.
I didn't say it was yes or no, Councilwoman. What I'm saying is, you're asking, like, why are we, why are we doing this? Why are we doing the campaign?
Why are we one, not four?
Well, it's all of it, because it's all of it. Remember, there are nine people on a council, and when nine people make a decision to say, "Maybe we want it here, there, we want it across the board," then that's what's done. But that's something that is easily... Ma'am, hang on, please, you had your, you had your time. So we have a communication strategy which can obviously be changed if people have different views. But here's the other thing I have to correct, and I need Drew to come up. 30 MGD was not pulled out of the sky. 30 MGD was, this team here didn't get together and say, "You know what? 30 sounds good." 30 MGD is based on a water plan that says, "This is what we need to the year 2040." So it's exactly what we need, exactly. So I always use the analogy, a builder is not going to build 5,000 homes on his property when he knows he can only sell, based on the population and the need, 2,500 of them, right? He's going to build 2,500, and he's going to sell every single one of those as quick as he can to get his money back. We cannot build more than 30 MGD because there is not a need for it to 2040. There is a plan. We didn't make up that plan. That's a statewide plan. Now, the next plan goes to 2070. Now, when you're looking at 2070, now we're talking another, what was it, 40?
We're short. We need more water for the 2070 plan.
No, I know that, but I'm saying, what is it from 2040 to 2070? The additional MGD? Well, it doesn't matter. Okay. Today, we're talking about 2030, and that's why, I just wanted to make sure that was said, and you can expand on that, because I remember thinking the same thing, and saying, "But 2030 is not, I mean, 30 is not going to, it's not going to take us to the end of, you know, eternity." But that's not what it's meant to do. We can't afford, who's going to pay for more? But you expand on that, please.
Well, and I'll just say this, look, 30 million gallons a day of water's a lot of water. I mean, if you were to think, that 30 million gallons a day satisfies the need for the city of Laredo, the city of Lubbock. I mean, 30 million gallons a day, if you just kind of run what the normal math would be for a per capita per day, it would satisfy the needs of a population of 200,000 people. So it absolutely is a lot of water, but I think the point is, is that, you know, it's 30, and we're going to continue to look for other supplies, because we know that 30 is a lot, but we want to make sure that we have other supplies that are being looked at, leveraged, and developed.
Okay. And I think the education part of it is critical no matter what, because, you know, should this continue to move forward, and let's say we, you know, June of '28 or July of '28, we're actually building that plant, which is, you know, hopefully the plan, then we have to be able to say we educated the public, that we made an effort in this historic, you know, a decision to let them know what we're doing and how we're doing it. Now, I agree with Councilwoman, I don't know, I'm not crazy about, not too crazy, I think it was just a one-time thing through the legislative session, you know, but spending that money more on the local, and the, "Here's what we're doing here in our own backyard," and drilling that in, but I think that's something that can be changed, because, you know, you can reallocate that to do something local. Let me move on, so we can get the rest of the council members. Councilwoman Vaughn.
I thought Gil was before me. He's not. Okay. That's good. That's fine. Sorry, Gil.
Sorry.
Hit his button first. Propaganda is an ugly word. I hate that word. It's when a person is biased and intentionally misleads somebody, it's misleading information. So I don't look at it like that, because what you're doing is you're talking about the Inner Harbor. That's what you're talking about. Can we talk about other things? Yes. We can talk about all our other water sources, and that's what I think they're saying we want to do, and I understand that. But I don't think that this is propaganda, what y'all did. I really like "What Fills Your Cup."
Thank you.
I like the way it sounds. One thing that I think y'all missed that I wished you would do, because this was a big issue for me, is the whole communication and education was to let the public know, "We are in a water crisis." And a lot of people still, to this day, unbelievable, do not know that. So I think there needs to be a focus on that, and I think there also needs to be a focus on conserving water. Because even when we get out of this, let's just say you build the desal, let's just say we do all these other water sources, which I think a lot of council members want to do. We still need to start conserving water, because we will, the day will come, just like it did again, we will be in a drought. So I wish we would focus more, Mr. Sinoni, on conserving water and letting them know there is a water crisis, but I'm not offended by this. We have been calling for communication and education since I got on this council, and I know things were done before we got here. Will those decisions stand? I don't know. But there is a reason that you did, so I'm not going to criticize you for that. I think, I love "What Fills Your Cup."
Thank you.
Yeah. Councilwoman Vaughn, thank you. I did, I provided that same input to Elisa, so she's working with the consultant on, because conservation is one of our pillars, you know, if you will. So it needs, it's going to be added to the campaign. I asked for it last week when she briefed me on this.
Oh. Questions on conserving, they have lots of great, crazy ideas, but they work. So involve your community, because they're part of it, just an idea.
Great idea. Thank you.
To include things like the rain barrel, you know, that, when I, Drew's going to give us an update on that soon. People are asking about, can we buy rain barrels? We usually have an annual campaign.
Right.
So, yeah, we'll be sharing that soon with the council.
So I think that's a great, great point, Councilwoman. And honestly, Peter, it was the last two councils who have brought up the conservation.
Yes, right.
And really, and you're very familiar with it.
Yeah.
San Antonio has a strong one.
Right.
And I know it takes a lot of money to do that, but I think that, to your point, people don't realize it. And there's, there are little ways, but it's all about, you know, educating them. So I think that's a great idea, Councilwoman. Councilman, why is your, like, Gil?
He wants to be last.
He's not the last.
Oh, he's going, he spends strategically. I used to do that, too.
Councilman Bonetta.
Mayor, thank you. First off, you know, everybody, everybody asks me, "Is anything wrong?" Because I've been so quiet lately. Well, but anyway, but I just wanted to, number one, thank you for the job you're doing.
Thank you.
I think, I think the campaign is beautiful. I know we've been asking for it for a long time. I know, you know, for six years, I've been advocating for this. So I'm one of the ones that, you know, you could go back to, and I'm proud of the work that you're doing. I think it was an amazing idea to put it in the Texas Tribune during the Texas Legislature. So that way, you know, it's particularly because we're getting so much support from the governor of Texas, from the lieutenant governor, from, you know, Senator Perry, you know, he went and spoke specifically at a Texas Tribune question-and-answer session, and he spoke specifically about Corpus Christi. And he even asked him, "What's the number-one project right now that you guys are looking at?" And he said, "Corpus Christi." And so I think that fits in line very well. I joke around, though, that, you know, I'm a big fan of the Texas Tribune, and I used to be an even bigger fan until I read my name in it, when they said, "Corpus Christi oversold its water," was the headline, which I disagreed with, but I think that... that was propaganda, that was just more, that was propaganda in my opinion. So what is it? So I think, great job. I think one of the things is that the, the resonance is that we, is that all the low cost, low-cost alternatives have been exhausted. The low-cost alternatives have been exhausted. And I just pleased that, you know, maybe perhaps in your presentation at some time or another, and I think I talked to you about this, Drew, over the weekend, is that we look at all these resources of which we're saying and that we have, Garber perhaps, give us a cost associated with each one. And just, we just need to confirm that so that way we have it documented and that's something that the council can have and that it can be available. As I indicated, the, I'll put that here, and then, you know, collectively, oh man, and I just had an email here that I was, that I went back to, you know, it is a regional program. It is a regional program. I mean, it's seven counties that we provide water for, 500,000 residents, what is it? And then the people that we meet with regularly are the Violet Water Supply, Cedar Valley, Cedar Beeville, Cedar Mathews, South Texas Water Authority, Nuance County, Wicked, number three, Tricia Municipal Water District. It is a regional plan. Everybody's looking at it. The entire world is looking at us. You know, Corpus Christi has geopolitical consequences. We reduce the dependency on foreign oil and Cheniere is the largest producer of liquefied natural gas in the entire, in the entire country. And they reduce the dependency on Russian coal. So I think it's very important we get that message out. I know people are shocked, what is it, you know, when, when we make statements like that as to where, and so it's, you know, we provide fuel for DFW, you know, for Austin Bergstrom. So we have an impact and I've said, you've heard me say it before, I'm not going to talk about my kids, but, you know, but we've heard me say it before that we have, what happens in Corpus Christi has global consequences and has consequences to global travel. So it's very important and then national travel, international travel. So Corpus Christi is very important and so I think this is, this is just looking at it from a standpoint of, you know, the words, I mean, I, I just, I just, in my opinion, it's a little myopic, but I, I understand the, the meaning behind it, but I think, I think, great job. I just want to commend you, great job. I, you know, heard a couple of people bounce on you, but I want to tell you, great job. Great job, Peter. Thank you and, and your team.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Hernandez.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, before I was elected to council for the first time, I had a lot of distrust for government. Since I've been on council for more than six years now, I have even less trust of government. Now, whether you intended this to be propaganda or not, it's probably going to be perceived that way because I don't think we've ever done any kind of campaign to this extent for anything. And so anytime the government puts a lot of effort in a campaign, you almost get the opposite effect, especially since, you know, we've had, you know, the COVID shot is safe by advertising, you know, that there's a lot of distrust in government and when you do something like this, it, it echoes of Pravda. For those of you who don't know what Pravda is, it was the official newspaper of the communist government. So I think you need to be very careful on how much you put, how much you do this because it's going to be perceived that way. I perceived it that way. When she said it, I had, had that same sentiment. I'm not saying it is. I'm not saying that was your intent. I'm not saying that's your intent. I'm not saying that's the mayor's intent. I'm just saying that's what it's, it could be perceived at if you go at it at this kind of level. Because we have never done this like this, ever. I can't think of any other campaign on anything that we've done as a city. Heck, we don't even promote the bonds like this, you know? So I want to make sure you understand, you know, that the, there's a general distrust of government. Heck, it goes back as far as the 80s. I think Ronald Reagan made the joke, I'm here from the government to help you, you know, it was a joke. So I, I want to be very cautious about this. You know, you had a react, you had some visceral reactions from some council members here on this particular campaign. And there's no, no offense to you, if this was a product, I probably wouldn't have had any issues with it, but because this is a government entity promoting a specific issue with only positives, no negatives, no pros and cons, this is, this can be, this is very much well-perceived as propaganda, whether you intended that to be or not. So I, I commend Councilwoman Paxton for suggesting that we do more than this. And let me just say that, you know, we have dragged our feet with other options for four years. We had opportunities to do other things, groundwater, wastewater reuse, you know, communicate with CC polymers. We, we, we put all our eggs in this basket and now we're in this situation. It, you know, it doesn't go for a lot of trust in, in what our city government is doing and, you know, I'm here, I'm part of it, you know? So it's, you know, I can tell you what my perception is and that's what it is. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would have to say that, you know, this is the single largest investment that the city of Corpus Christi is making and that's why, that's why we're doing, that's why there's a, there must be a campaign, communications campaign for desalination. It's an issue that, it isn't just a, I don't, I don't know how to explain it, anything across the board, I mean, this is water. So, so we can look back, Councilman, all day and talk about 2014, I don't know, 20, what, what mark, what year were you on?
18.
Okay, let's go.
34.
What? Oh, stop.
16.
My point is, oh, okay, okay. But we can go back and talk about any year you choose, that, it's just not constructive. It, it's not constructive. This is the team now. This is the team and, and we move forward and we move as a majority. That's the way it works. That's the way it works. So, so I respect, I just talked about respecting, I respect and I thank you for saying the same about me, Councilman. I respect your, your opinions, I do. But, but to answer your question simply, this is the single largest and most important decision that any council since 18, is that 52, right? 32? I can't see it. It's 1852. Since then, and, and it deals with water. And so do we need a campaign? Yeah, let's go and do one because we're talking about educating the very people who are paying for this. So, Councilwoman Gumples, is this your?
Second time.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. That being, okay, the largest investment and I think there would have been a buy-in had it been a voter-approved project. So, you know, I've harped over that as well. I also wanted clarification on the statement that our mayor made about us have spending 200 million. Brett, I think I asked you that just last week, how much had we actually spent? And I thought I, I wrote it down in my notes, but it's way less, like what, 18 million or something like that? It wasn't, nowhere near where 200 million because that's, that was important. But the other thing, Elise, while he's looking for that, is I do want to apologize to you specifically because I know you're just doing your job. It is the decision of some of our other, of our council members and specifically, I guess, our mayor. Because she has been the number one, I mean, laser focus, as I believe you have said on this. And as being a team member, a team member that I don't agree with this decision and I will continue to be vocal on that decision. And the other thing is, you know, us about planning ahead, we did plan ahead, Mayor. We planned ahead on the Mary Rhodes Pipeline and it was supposed to have last, I believe, to 2050, but you know what happened? Hello, we oversold the water. So no, it was not propaganda, it was a fact. So I'm sorry, Brett, what was it?
So our, our total commitments today paid to just Keywood and Friesen Nichols is at 20 million?
20.
And we have additional commitments we paid to consultants over the last couple of years, which is between 2 and 3 million.
Okay, so about 23 million.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Way off 200 million. Thank you.
So, so we've not sold any bond, we've not done anything prior to? Yes, we have.
Yeah, I think, excuse me, I think what the mayor said is that there's a commitment of 200 million. She, if you look at the tape, excuse me, I'm speaking.
Councilwoman.
I'm speaking, Councilwoman. Okay, she just wanted to hear the answer.
Go ahead, she doesn't want to hear it.
The mayor said a second statement, which is that we have a commitment for 200 million. That's what we issued bonds for. We have bonds that we're paying back and they're in trust right now for phase one of this project, that total 200 million.
Right.
Yeah, we've issued the debt. It's in the, it's in a trust account.
Right.
We're paying them back.
Right, so it is.
Yeah.
So let's repeat that. Councilwoman's back.
Okay. What the mayor said is that there's a commitment of 200 million that the city has pledged and the forms of issuing debt that we're obligated to pay back. The money is in the bank, it's in a trust fund right now. Brett's statement's accurate as well. He said 22 million that has been spent, but we have 200 million that we have a commitment on that we've issued, that we've sold bonds for.
Right.
With the Texas Water Development Board being a partner and that money is in the bank.
Thank you, Peter.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilman Scott.
Take your time. Quick, hey, look, I, I think cautiousness is good. I think criticism and tough questions are good. I think campaigns and education are good. If councilmembers get a chance, go to the San Diego website and look at their Pure Water San Diego. It's, it's a fantastic education. This is what we're doing. We, we have a game plan, we're on it and they spend a gazillion dollars, talking about spending money. So I, I thank you for doing this. I think it needs to be done. I think education's good again, but I, I don't, I think we should listen to criticism and if it makes the product better, I'm good with that. I, I do understand we sold $222 million. I think the bond language says you can only spend it on inner harbor desal and at some point I think we probably ought to kind of talk that through, but I like it. My point is, thank you for what you're doing, I support it. I also think people, you know, throwing darts at it does nothing but make it a better campaign, but I do think there's a lot of people asking kind of what's going on. I think this answers it, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Vaughn.
Real quick, I think we can all agree up here, we can disagree on a lot of things, but I think our focus and our commitment to the citizens of this city are that we're committed to finding water. No matter what the water sources are, we're committed to finding water. So I hope the campaign will continue and I hope that we show that we are looking at other water sources as well as desal. But then we need to tell them what's desal's about because so many people do not know, they need to know what the price tag is on all the projects that we're looking at. So I think we can say we're committed to finding water and I think we have that consensus. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Ryan.
Yeah, thank you for your presentation. I think, I think it's definitely a lot of thought put into it and I think that anytime you're trying to educate any group, it's important. And when you're trying to educate them to the best of your ability and, and in terms of making sure that you provide facts and, yeah, again, I think it's, I applaud that. You know, one of the things I can't help but thinking about is the fact that we have the ability to talk about propaganda. And when you take a look at what this council, other councils, any councils that have been involved in this journey in terms of trying to bring a sustainable water source to our city, what we've went through, you know, we've had propaganda that showed raw sewage being dumped into the river, which is, it's, it couldn't be further from the truth. You know, we've had all this propaganda that when we consistently show that our intent, our desire is not to harm the bays and estuaries, we've had people turn a blind eye and look the other way and give us garbage related to that and saying, oh no, this is what's really happening without being able to, to go forward and have any proven anything, but it's propaganda, but it's okay if it's on the other shoe. So when I take a look at my job as an, as an elected official, I'm here to serve my constituents, conserve, to serve the people in my community. I've said this time and time again, it doesn't really matter what I think. I'm here because I need to understand and listen to what my constituents want. And I've heard repeatedly that they want a sustainable water source. We've heard that and that's why this council, and as I've been on this council since 2017 when I first came on, that was the message that was there. But we do need to educate, but to sit there and try to use something where we're saying, okay, this is a propaganda, this is something that we've got to be careful. Because you know what's funny about this? When there were some of us that wanted, and, and I'll admit this, of looking at the convention hotel and trying to figure out a way to go through and, and hopefully get this hotel passed and some other things like funds for the airport, then we were criticized, the city manager was criticized and others were criticized that we didn't do enough. We didn't go forward and put enough information out there and we didn't look, we just did a terrible job in relationship to our opponents who did a great job in terms of putting out their propaganda. So we were criticized for that and we were saying, you guys hired an outside company and they didn't do it and we could have done a better job. So it's just interesting to see how this target keeps moving from left to right or whatever as it sees fit when somebody tries to get their message apart. But at the end of the day, I, I really want the people of this city to hold us, elected officials accountable so that they're listening because this is the future of our city, this is the future of our children, this is the future of their children's children. And we got one, we got really one chance to get this right and if we don't get it right, shame on us and we deserve to be kicked off this council. So again, thank you for your job. I appreciate it. I appreciate what you guys are doing, but the day's going to come when the people are going to sit there and hold us accountable and it's not that far off. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Elisa, that's all the questions and comments, so thank you very much. Yeah, so I think at this point, that wraps up the inner harbor, correct? The presentation?
Correct.
All three parts?
Correct.
Thank you. I'm going to see if we can go ahead and pass the consent agenda and then we're going to break for lunch and come back and do numbers three and four. So would any council member like to pull any item from the consent agenda? Items five through 11.
I make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. All in, are, are you putting that up, Rebecca? Yes, okay. Yes. Would anyone in the public like to pull any item on the agenda five through 11? Okay, there being no one, we have a motion in a second. Please submit your vote. Okay, the motion carries. The council is going to go into executive session on items 14 and 15 per Texas Government Code 551.071 and 551.072. When we return, we will pick up on briefings, grant activity update, and then after that we'll go to the briefing on the 89th Texas Legislative Session update. Mayor, Mr.?
I was.
Did you not vote?
No, ma'am.
Okay, can you record his vote?
Yes, we will.
Okay, sure. We will return. We will return.
Okay, I'd like to call this meeting back to order and reconvene. I'm going to move things around here. Well, first of all, I think we do have an item to address here after our executive session. And Peter, did you have a comment on that?
Right, yeah. So one of our executive session items dealt with the housing authorities' recent transactions that have taken hundreds of millions of property, taxable property off the tax rolls. And so for the city of Corpus Christi, based on what we know today, it could have an impact in our budget of 3.5 million in lost revenue initially, and it could go up to 7 million if all the transactions take place, 7 million in lost properties tax revenue. We just want to make sure the community is clear, and I know the council is, but just to say it here on the public record, that the transactions that have taken place recently from the housing authority were just that, they were from the Corpus Christi Housing Authority, not from the city council. So nobody in the city authorized those transactions. The city council didn't vote on them.
Unaware of it. We were unaware of it.
We were unaware of it, right. It wasn't until we began to look at our taxable value that one of our assistant city managers, Heather Holbert, actually discovered, working with the appraisal, that millions, hundreds of millions potentially has taken off our tax rolls. And that's a lot of money, 3.5 million, up to 7 million out of the general fund is a tremendous financial impact. It's not a rounding error. It's big money, and real money. It was the action of the Corpus Christi Housing Authority. And so Mayor, with that, I'm going to turn it back over to you.
Thank you. Thank you. So we have a resolution to present. Councilwoman Paxton, would you like to read it?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion adopting a resolution authorizing active opposition to improper and/or illegal use of property tax exemptions by the Corpus Christi Housing Authority affiliates and entities connected thereto.
Councilwoman Hernandez.
Mayor, thank you. I just want to say I wasn't sure if this was an illegal action done by the Housing Authority. I know our city attorney has stated that he believes it's illegal. Is that correct, Miles, that you believe that the action was illegal?
It's improper and/or illegal. So it may be illegal, we're looking into that, but it's definitely improper.
Okay, so because I wasn't, I'm not comfortable with saying something is illegal if I don't know it's illegal.
Wait, no, I have to correct you because you're implying that the rest of the council, however they vote, is voting on something of what you just said. What is written in this resolution, Councilwoman, would you read that part?
Authorizing active opposition to improper and/or illegal use.
Okay, and/or illegal use.
Illegal use.
Right, okay, so, yeah.
Okay, so, I mean, prior to getting cut off, you know.
I'll give you your time back.
The, like I said, if I can, I agree that it's improper, maybe unsavory. Like I said, I don't know if it's and/or illegal. But if you're comfortable with, you know, calling something that's illegal.
We're not doing that. I've got to correct you. It's an and/or.
Okay, I understand, I understand that we are saying that it is, you know, we're not saying that it is an illegal function, but you're implying it by the way this is written.
It says and/or, but Councilman, you just vote against it if you're not.
I want to vote for it. I just want to point out.
Then vote for it.
I'd point out that the language is a little leading in the sense that, you know, we're calling something that's illegal that we're not sure.
We're not calling anything illegal. I have to correct it.
Well, like I said, I just, I'm going to be Jiminy Cricket here and give my opinion and, you know, conscience about it, but, okay.
All right, thank you. Councilman Roland Barretta seconded the motion, and we are, let's see, yeah, submit your vote, please. Oh, a change of heart.
That's not a change of heart.
Change of hearts. I understand, I understand. The motion carries unanimously, thank you. So I'm going to go to, we have another resolution, thank you, Councilwoman, we have another resolution. Item number 13 is a resolution of the Corpus Christi City Council supporting Senate Bill 22 and House Bill 4568, which creates the Texas Moving Image Industry Incentive Program.
I make a motion to it for?
Yes, we have a motion and a second. This is a, it's a resolution that is supporting the film industry, Councilman.
And we don't have to pay.
It's the film industry, yes. So this is several, Councilwoman Hernandez, it's several million, several hundred million dollars. It's, it already exists, but it's several hundred million dollars that is going to be hopefully funded by the state, for the state of Texas, incentivize film and, well, the film industry here in Texas. Councilman Scott.
No, actually, it doesn't. Yeah, there's a lot of.
What?
Is that wishful thinking?
Did you catch that? Everybody?
I hope that.
I'll repeat it.
I cannot believe.
Let me just.
No, I'm not going to repeat that for the public, or should I?
No.
So let's get back on track, please.
Just so know, Mayor, I think this is a, it's a great effort.
Well, this was your, this was your.
So it's 5 billion, 250 million per year. It puts Texas in the ballgame, incentivizing of the film industry. Chairman Hunter's carrying the House version or through the House, I think it's a Senate bill, and he's working hard, and I think it's an opportunity for us to support his efforts. I will tell you, I think it's a two-step. I think we should be participating in upping our game locally, because now people are looking at Texas, right? They're going, oh, man, there's five, they're all chasing the money. I kind of, I get it, it's kind of like D-Saw, everybody's chasing the money. But, but I think they're going to look at Texas. And so what we need to be in a position to do, especially with Chairman Hunter there, is to say, hey, 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 when you're looking at Texas, look at Corpus. And there's some information hopefully we can all share soon that we could, we could up, up, up our game, like San Antonio, Houston, Galveston, Fort Worth, and frankly, other cities in Louisiana and Georgia that can get us in the game and get the film industry looking at Corpus.
Agreed, agreed. Thank you. And thank you for bringing it forth, Councilman. I'm going to ask for public comment. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make public comment on item number 13? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, we'll close with public comment. Councilman Barretta.
Here, and I just want to say, Gil, if you'll bear with me, because I'm going to talk about my children's, what is, this is, this is very personal to me. I actually, I remember talking to Brett about it when he was with Visit Corpus Christi. The reason my daughter left the state of Texas, she was living in Austin, working a lot with Robert Rodriguez, because Troublemaker Studios over there, and working on other projects, and the incentives dried up in Texas. And so with the incentives drive up in Texas, obviously, she went where the opportunity was. So, and that was in New York City. So this is something that I just want to let everybody know, and a personal, I really appreciate you guys supporting this. And Mark, thanks coming up with the idea for the resolution.
Thank you, Councilman. Okay, I'm going to, let's see, we have a motion and a second, don't we? Okay, please submit your vote. Okay, the motion carries. Item.
One more, Mayor.
You didn't?
Did you vote in favor? Okay, for the record, he voted.
Okay. Item number 12 is a presentation of the plan of finance for fiscal year 2025 and resolution by the City Council authorizing and approving publication of notice of intention to issue not more than $43,200,000 of certificates of obligation as included and approved by City Council in the fiscal year 2025 capital budget.
I'll just begin then. Thank you for having me here. For the record, my name is Victor Kidogo, I specialize in public finance, and it's good to see the mayor, the council, Mr. Zanoni. Thank you again for having me here. So as a follow-up to last week's conversation where we provided you an overview of the city's debt position. Now, the financing plan is regarding the financing needs that the city is looking to fund through the issuance of various types of financing tools that are allowed by the state. And so this presentation will go over some of that, some of those plans, and also the timeline, and then walk you through future action that the council would take if it wants to consider these financing tools to cover projects. And so before I begin, just wanted to let you know, the bond market has been somewhat volatile, and when the tariff war started, it actually was not even moving at all. There's been investors just kind of in the sidelines. Now that there's hopefully some resolution with various countries talking to the U.S. and agreeing to certain terms, we're starting to see a little bit of settling down with bond investors and the market to start normalizing a little bit where we could find investors and find you attractive interest rates. So overall, we like this graph because it shows you that, you know, when we listen to the news, we always hear very dour news because that's the way they sell news, and but, you know, interest rates are going up, they're kind of volatile, but when you put it perspective, we're still in a pretty attractive interest rate environment whenever you're trying to issue and borrow for your long-term needs. And so this year's financing plan contemplates five different transactions for a total amount of $379,825,000. Of that amount, $259,320,000 is for what we call project funding, and then the remaining amount of a little bit over $120 million is to pursue refinancing opportunity for the city's utility system to generate some interest cost savings for your ratepayers. And so you can see there in the bottom half of this slide, the various transactions that the city is contemplating, $30 million in general obligation bonds. This is from the November 2022 bond program that the voters authorize you to move forward with. Certificates obligation, INS tax-supported, about $38.72 million. There's also certificates of obligation, these are taxable, they're going to have a little bit higher interest rate, but they're going to support the solid waste department. Then we also have $11,120,000 through tax notes, and that is to, for, to fill the budget gap that was required during this current budget cycle that we're in. And then the largest component is going to be the utility system revenue and refunding bonds, where we're going to generate $175 million in bond proceeds to cover projects and also $120 million, as I indicated earlier, for a refinancing opportunity. Just like the past, the bonds that we're contemplating here, and the staff is asking for, it's not to fund new capital improvements that the council, whether this council or previous council, has yet to approve. Many of these bond projects has either been designed and contracted for, or even the city started incurring some expenses, and now it's looking to issue debt to recoup those expenses that it initially paid using its own cash. And so Mr. Zanoni has a little bit more detail here when we get to that section of the presentation. But just to break down the various needs for the property tax-supported, the GOs, COs, and the tax notes, you can see the breakdown as to the capital improvements that each of those financing tools will cover, and how we came up with the various borrowing amounts that we're showing here. Same thing for the utility system, it's $175 million. You can see the breakdown between water, wastewater, stormwater, and gas to come up with the $175 million bond program. And again, we're also going to add $120 million in principal amount for existing debt to take high-interest-rate debt and convert it into lower-interest-rate debt. Whenever we pursue these refinancings, ladies and gentlemen, we never extend the repayment term. We're always going to keep the original repayment term from that original bond. All we're going to do is switch a high-interest rate for a low-interest rate based off of preliminary interest figures. Where, that'll generate for your ratepayers about $5.7 million in interest cost savings by conducting this refunding. So this final slide here is just the city's current bond ratings. The city is actually in a very strong position in terms of its credit rating. It carries two different ratings, and so, like we talked about last week, whenever you issue tax-supported bonds or property tax-supported bonds, bond investors view that as a safer investment, and so do rating agencies. And so your bonds that are secured by property taxes, those have the highest rating of the AA category. And right now, all three rating agencies view the, view you the same and grade you the same at that AA category. So what that means is that the higher the credit rating, the lower the interest rate you're able to get and go into the market on your own, which the city does in the past. So the utility system, that's a little, that's a credit rating that is still strong for the city Corpus Christi. You're still in the AA category, but you're just one notch below your general obligation credit rating, which is pretty common for most Texas cities that have those two separate systems and secured debt by those two systems. So one thing to point out that these rating agencies and bond investors, they not only look at how much debt you have, because I know when you talk these big figures, it's even for me, I did this every day for 25 years, it's, you know, a big number that we have to wrap our mind around, and, but they don't really just look at the debt position because they know that most municipalities here in the state of Texas, when you're borrowing money, it's going to be for capital improvements or capital infrastructure. So you're getting an asset back for that, for that debt. It's not like we're funding payroll expenses or anything like that. But it's still debt nevertheless. They also look at things like management, they've indicated, you know, they appreciate the strong management here at the city, the financial prudence that you've shown as a council. But they also look at things that you can't control, like the economy, who's moving in, who's moving out, what industries are coming in. So it's just a comprehensive view. But overall, your rating is very strong, and we anticipate that being a benefit for us when we enter the market if you allow us to do so for these transactions. So just some of the action items. Today, we're just laying out the financing plan. You also have an opportunity to start moving forward on the certificates of obligation financing. There's certain steps and laws, rules that we have to follow under state law, and so that's contemplated today as well. Currently, we're going to hopefully bring back to you the utility system revenue refunding bond first. That'll come with the first reading in June 10th and then June 17th. All your bond ordinances under city charter require two readings. And then we'll follow up with the GO-supported debt later on in July. And what we're trying to do is, the certified values don't come out till July 25th. We want to get a handle to see what those values are, if any legislative changes impacted us negatively before we issue the property tax-supported debt so that we're in line with the 22-cent INS tax rate that's been communicated to the voters in the past. So lastly, ladies and gentlemen, as I indicated earlier, you know, we're dealing with big numbers and everything, and debt is not a good word, and taxes aren't a good word. But do you just want to highlight that, you know, when municipalities, schools, cities, you know, we're not always asking for new bonds or new debt, for new projects or more taxes. The city, and this precedes me too, the city has been very prudent with its debt management, has pursued refinancing opportunities whenever it can. And in the past 10 years, you've pursued refinancing and saved your taxpayers and ratepayers about $272 million over that time by taking those prudent actions. So we're not always just borrowing new money, we're also being diligent and prudent with taxpayer funds and trying to refinance, just like we're doing this year with the utility system. Just hand it over to Sergio here real quick.
Thank you. Okay. So today, we're asking for a resolution authorizing and approving the publication of the notice of intention to issue certificates of obligations. This slide gives you a nice snapshot of the process for, for where we're at today. And so we start off with the capital improvement projects, planning and funding during the budget season. So that's roughly around summertime. And toward, as we move forward in the calendar year towards the wintertime, around December this past, where we did reimbursement resolutions so that we can go ahead and start, starting these projects up and then deferring the issuance of debt. During that same time, Capitol staff is looking at what our cash needs are so we can minimize the amount that we do need to issue. And so today, we're actually, all those steps have been done, and today we're asking for the City Council to consider authorizing to publish a notice of intention to issue the approved certificates of obligation. So the next steps here today, of course, I mentioned we're authorizing, and the dates are similar to what, are exactly the same as Victor just presented, plan to issue the certificates, or authorized to issue certificates in July, on July 15th, July 22nd, with an anticipation to close on August 20th. And the fund, the, the programs are going to be funded with the certificates of obligation includes about 4.4 million to solid waste, 4.1 million to public health and safety, 14 million for streets, 6 million for stormwater, 11.9 million for parks and recreation, and about 2.5 million for public facilities. That concludes my presentation. I'll take any questions.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Hernandez.
Peter, remind me again how we got the stormwater project all paid for with certificates of obligation. I thought this was going to be covered through a different fund.
Yeah, just a second, Councilman, let me look at the.
There's North Beach drainage improvements, I'm not sure what the.
So, yeah, there's probably some additions, probably in one of our budgets, I don't know what budget without having it here in front of me, Sergio, but we recommend it's COs for some of that.
I mean, some of this was supposed to be paid for through ARPA funds, and then.
It is.
We voted on a stormwater.
Right.
1-8 cents sales tax to cover some of these things. Why are we doing this through COs?
Yeah, because we, we tried to piece together a series of funds to address what's a 20, 20-some-odd-million-dollar project. So we use ARPA monies, we use budget general fund dollars, we use COs. It was a combination of dollars that we, we put together for the project.
So Councilman Hernandez, on, I think we have talked about this several times during budget, is that the stormwater fee is primarily funding maintenance, and so any of the large projects with the stormwater are, is not being funded through the storm, the primary not being funded through stormwater. We're adding this.
Peter said the exact opposite last week. He said it was for major projects, not for maintenance.
The stormwater fee?
Uh huh. Not the stormwater.
Yeah, the sales tax.
The 1-8 cents sales tax.
Oh.
That's what I'm talking about. So the 1-8 cents sales tax funding should have gone for something like this.
So 1-8 cents isn't, isn't ready yet. So that doesn't kick in, that authorization does not revert, to convert over to the new authorization until April, and so.
Okay, so are we going to use that funding to pay off these COs? I mean, what, I just, I understand, you know, trying to find money to pay for things, right? And then we've committed to doing drainage improvements on North Beach. Like I said, I just don't recall using COs for it.
Yeah, that was what was in the adopted CIP, was actually, there were three different tranches, I believe, of COs. So there was about four, almost $5 million with ARPA funding. As Peter said, there was some cash funding. And then I want to say there was close to $18 million in COs over three different tranches. So that is something we can definitely look at, we needed, this is to get the project started. We don't have the, you know, we will need to look at bonding capacity within the 1-8 cents sales tax as we move forward, and we can definitely look at that for the other tranches that we were looking at to be able to continue funding the project. But as of right now, we're not able to issue anything against that 1-8 cents sales tax since it does not convert until April 1 of 2026.
Right, and when we talked about it, Councilman, with the community, we said it would be for Phase 2. So right now, Phase 1, that was in the CIP, that's council-approved over the years. It takes us from the North Peninsula to about Midway, and that's all, that's, that's the funding that's. And that's all, that's the funding that's existing to do that first phase. There's nothing, there's nothing identified for Phase 2. However, when we were talking about the sales tax election, that was a good candidate project was finishing off the canal with this type of money, the sales tax for the, for the stormwater.
Okay, also, I want to kind of ask questions about Elizabeth Street and the industrial streets. Why are we doing COs off of this? I thought we were using Type B funding to pay for those.
So we did get Type B funding for them. These, I believe, are the overruns basically. The projects cost more than what was funded through the Type B. And so the, what was, I believe, brought forward during the budget was to utilize COs to do kind of that last, that last little bit of funding to make those projects hold.
It seems like this funding was put in, you know, was not discussed when we voted on the, on the actual project, at least not to my recollection. I have to go back and look at it.
So the projects, both of those projects were approved multiple fiscal years ago?
Because Elizabeth Street was done, what, two years ago?
I think it was approved in maybe '23.
Right, two years ago, right?
Yeah, it was just completed. The streets just now, they just reopened it.
So are you reimbursing what you paid on this with this one?
Yeah.
Well, it's for the overage, basically. It's for, it's in addition to the Type B funding.
Yeah, if there's, if there's still bills to be paid and they get paid before this debt's issued, this would reimburse us.
Okay, so this is information that, you know, I shouldn't be seeing on the overages right when we're selling bonds.
Yeah, yeah. Councilman, we can get the budget presentation from the summer. I'm sure we went over it, the, you know, the capital budget.
I voted against using COs for this kind of stuff to begin with.
Yeah, but let's, let's get the, I'll get the budget presentation from last summer. And it is in the capital budget. This is, it was approved. It's not, this is not new information. None of this information is new. It was all part of the budget presentation last summer. It was, it was probably presented in the PowerPoint from Jeff Edmonds. It was included in the final budget that was approved by council last summer or September.
Okay, I'll take a look at it.
Yeah, I'll get it too.
Thank you, councilman. Councilwoman Vaughn, so all of these projects that are on here, they were approved by the previous council.
That is correct.
And I guess my question was that too. Did they know they were going to use COs? Obviously not, or maybe they did on.
No, it's, yeah, the capital budget has a project for, has a page for every project, and all the revenue sources are clearly.
And how you get it?
They're clearly lined, yeah, they're clearly outlined. There's nothing hidden, there's no.
That's what I'm asking.
bait and switch. It says COs to be issued or not, yeah.
Okay, just making sure.
Yeah, no problem.
They actually approved an animal control facility.
It was the design. Actually, I believe it was for the original design of the new kennels and stuff like that. That project got put on hold as we went through the analysis that was done. And so, yeah, there's, I think, about 1.1 million that was there.
And so with that 1 point million, 1 million, when you go a little over a million to a design, is that like 10% of what you think the project's going to cost? So y'all saying that project is 10 million?
You know, they were talking 20 million, 20, 25 million for the kennel, so it's probably not. However, when we come back in the next council meeting on the 10th, we may make a recommendation to use that for the existing facilities and not use it for design of new kennels. We have, I think it was, I think it's 25, it's millions, it's tens of millions of deferred maintenance, like leaking roofs, no AC. And the 2 million or so in the ARPA money won't be enough to cover these immediate things. So yesterday, we began working on this budget that we're going to bring on the 10th using these one-time monies. And I'm pretty sure we're going to recommend using the COs that were for the new kennels to fix the current ones before we build anything else.
Well, I'm glad to hear you say that because we know the city can't afford.
Right, we're not, right.
And we know that's not the big problem.
Yeah.
We know it's management.
Right, you can't kennel, right. Like I told Sony yesterday, we can't kennel our way out of this issue. It's called live release and adoption and fostering and managing it that way, so.
I have a real difficult time with certificates of obligations because I can remember the day when they were just for emergencies. Has that changed?
Yes, the legislation has changed on that, and it's not just under emergencies. There are multiple other uses for those. They have limited the type of facilities that they can be used on. So administrative facilities, things like that, you can't use it. Everything that we have up here is allowable under the state statute.
Because it really kind of puts us in a pickle right now because these have been approved. A lot of them have been done, they're in the process. So if you don't approve it, you can't pay it.
That's correct. I take Elizabeth Street, I live in that area. The street was just completely redone, it's reopened. If we haven't paid them their final invoice, it's due soon. The contractor's nowhere to be found because the work's done.
We really don't have any choices.
Yeah, it goes back to what we were talking to Councilwoman Paxton about earlier, that these two-year cycles, some of these projects are long lead. They cross over year after year, and one council may approve something, the next may not endorse it necessarily, but.
But you're responsible for the money.
Right, yeah, in this case, many of these projects, bills are due. We have a reimbursement resolution where we use city monies in our, in our bank accounts to pay while we, before, ahead of issuing the debt. So people are getting paid, but this money, in some cases, it's, it will be getting paid as the project moves forward.
Okay.
And just to add just a little bit, you know, one of the things we have moved towards over the last several years is more prudent issuance of the debt and the fact that we're more closely matching the debt with when the expenses are being incurred. So as Sergio said, we look forward on a 12 to 18 month basis to look forward to see what we're going to use. We utilize those reimbursement resolutions so that we're not issuing debt ahead of time, but more, as I would call it, just-in-time debt issuance. So we're getting those issuances as we need the money, and it's not just sitting in the bank.
Yeah, can I add one more thing, Mayor? I'm sorry, but for the new council members, so we have, we had a lot of citizens last summer and especially, but maybe even the summer before, speak against the use of COs. And Councilman Hernandez and others on council didn't really like the application of COs. So I didn't, I did not recommend any of them in this current budget, no new ones in the budget that council went through the summer, last summer, and approved in September, with the exception of tax notes, which is a shorter-term issuance just for some street work so we could stay level funded. But I didn't recommend any COs, and I'm not doing it anymore just because it's just too much negative backlash. So what it means for the community is a slight, maybe a little bit of delay. We'll put everything in a bond program. And so if we could do something right now, say with COs, we'll wait to the 2026 bond program, let the voters decide, do they want to put it in or not? So in the current budget that the council approved, the city manager didn't recommend any new COs, only the rollover of the ones that we already went through the whole process and had in, just so you know. Yeah, okay.
And Peter, back to the COs for the.
More care.
Yes, so can we give you that direction to bring that back just for that particular, for ACC?
Yes, ma'am. So when we bring the, well, the AC, the roofs, the cattery, the several things, but the 2 million or so Heather's still getting us the balances, but it won't be enough to make a dent in that list. We're also going to recommend funding some of the staff positions that were requested because just fixing the facilities won't get us too far. So we need some immediate staff positions. I've done this before in my prior place where I work. So what we'll do though, because you don't want to use one-time monies for recurring, is we'll set up a two-year, we'll set up a second-year reserve. So we'll have two years of funding for the position for one year so that'll give us time to get the budget, maybe our revenues get right-sided. So we're going to reclass all the live release coordinators, add a dispatcher and add a communications person. We'll have the money for the one year, and then we'll set aside out of this million, out of these monies we have from ARPA and the kennels, a second-year reserve to pay for them in year two in case our budget continues to have a challenge.
I just want to make sure it's clear that we'd like that money, the CO money.
Right, it's going to be the COs and the ARPA will be our total revenue stream, which hopefully will be around 3.2, 3.3 million or so. We're going to see the final balances in the ARPA, but.
And I don't mean to, I'm getting off.
That's coming on on the 10th of June, yes.
Yeah, thank you. Councilman Kent, too.
Just to clarify, we would be using the bond funding for the facility, the ARPA funding for the personnel. Yeah.
I'm still a freshman, so forgive me, please. On the animal care facility design, I heard Councilwoman Vaughn saying it's 10% from the total cost. Is that, is that what I heard?
So that's usually what we, when we're, when we're looking at the project cost, that usually is we estimate about 10% of the design, of the project for design. But what we said is that that project, even though it says it would be for design, that was originally was included in the CIP. We're not necessarily going to move forward with design. We would be utilizing those bond funds still for the animal care facility, but not for design of a new one. We would take those funds and invest it into those capital improvements that are needed to be done at the facility for those improvements.
So the 2 million that Peter was talking about will be 3 million?
Exactly, so we'd have probably, you know, probably about $2 million. We're still getting what that balance is that would be from our interest earnings from ARPA or the American Rescue Plan Act, which can be used for this purpose in addition to the 1.1 million dollars in the bond funding.
Did you say how much it was going to cost for kennels?
No, I'm not sure. I think the original project was about 20 million. I think Peter mentioned it was about $20 million.
Can me and Carolyn go find the contractor?
I want to.
That is crazy.
I don't think it was, I think it was for other improvements too. I don't think it was just for the kennels. It was for the whole improvement at the facility. But like I said, we're not proposing to move forward with that specific project, but rather move it in, you know, invest it into the existing facility.
I said we go buy some homes in Corpus Christi and put them in there. I mean, it's cheaper. Yeah, yeah, we could buy a house for 150 and put 50 animals in there.
That's right.
I mean, that's crazy. Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Campos.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you so much, Heather, for explaining about how we're, how we ended up here with using the certificates of obligation. Because I, again, you know, I was one of those persons that, it was, I think, my first year that, that Councilman Hernandez, you know, kind of influenced me about the certificates of obligation. At the time, there was this concept or vision that, not vision, but that we should not be looking to those certificates of obligations. We should be making sure that it is part of the bonds, it is part of something. But tell me, tell us again about why it is that we're looking at this 43 million? Because I think what I remember you telling me was that you started looking at doing, using the certificates of obligation just like three, four, when you, when you started, when you started with us.
Sure, no, the conversation that you and I had was about the issuing the debt kind of just in time. Not necessarily the use of certificates of obligation. The city has historically used certificates of obligation for certain projects. We have had to use more of them over the last several years just because a lot of our projects with the cost escalations, we, by the time we plan the project, by the time we take it to the voters and issue it and then are getting it approved, and then we move forward to that project, the cost has grown. And so over the past several years, we have used more certificates of obligations to fill those gaps, so.
And it looks like, I mean, here that we have actually saved some money according to our finance, I'm sorry.
Yes, Mr. Kioga.
Yeah, that we've actually saved money doing it that way. But we're not going to be using certificates of obligation to this extent in the future. Is that correct?
That is the plan per, yeah, Peter, taking that out.
Right, or at all, if there's an emergency or something, we may come forward. But in the, in the time that we have to develop the budget in the summer, I'm not going to recommend COs for any type of fulfilling a complete project budget or, you know, doing something that the community might want. That'll have to be on a bond program.
Okay, I think that's the best way to go, so. All right, thank you.
Councilwoman Paxton.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't want to belabor the point, and I appreciate Mr. Zanoni making the, letting us know that you are withholding that recommendation for the next budget. I myself have a really, 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 categorically, I'm really opposed to certificates of obligation. Reading the list that's in our packet, the items under public safety and streets are things that I personally would prioritize. I recognize that we are in the latter stages of these. It all really does tie in for me, you know, change orders, all those types of things. It all just adds up. I don't like certificates of obligation. I appreciate you moving away from those. So this, this item is, it's difficult, difficult for me to say yes to, with the exception of those two portions, the public safety and the streets. That's where, that's where I am on this piece, but thank you for clarifying for Budget 26.
Yeah, we did it for 25, we did that, I had that, I had that philosophy for the 25 budget that we're currently in, and we'll carry it into the 26 as well. Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Scott.
Five minutes, talk fast. So Peter, you're telling me that in the future, if we vote on a bond, Leopards, Alameda Street, $10 million, and it, it takes two years, blah, blah, blah. And when it's done, it's 11 million, you have to go back to the voters to get the extra million? So what happens if it's, I guess if it's voted down? It just seems to me that's bad public policy. I've always supported COs to bridge the shortcomings. I ask you guys to drive down Alameda, Staples to Alameda. It's five lanes for miles, and for one half mile, it's three lanes. Because rather than do COs, we ratcheted down the project. And I guess that's what you would do in the end, and it just made no sense to me. So I just, you know, I'm okay with COs to, to bridge those gaps. It's not the ratepayers fault. To me, they voted to, to do Alameda Street between two street, you know, and we think it's 10 million, if it's not, shame on us. But they really want that road, so that's the, number two. Is it, do we, does it cost us more money if we don't use COs? Is there, like you're saying, we're not going to use COs anymore. At the end of the day, when you finish all those projects, does that cost the ratepayer more money?
It could if we say that, say it's 2024 and the next bond program's out to 2026, and we need $2 million, we're going to wait two years to put it on a bond program. By then, construction inflation could, you know, increase the cost of the project.
It just seems odd to me that we're going to go, hey, carp launch, not happening, no COs, and then it ends up costing the voters more money. I don't, I don't like that. And I think that's kind of the conversation we had yesterday. I don't like COs except that the bridge, you know, the gap. But on the other hand, I don't want to go to my, to go to our voters and say, hey, look, because of my position, you give a heads up, you could pay more, right?
Yeah.
Okay, I understand that's what you're doing, I understand you're doing.
Yeah, a couple of things that we are doing is, and we've been in a cycle now of doing design only and one bond program.
And that's how you get, you avoid it?
And we have, so we have, the goal is to have better cost estimates. What may have happened in the past is there were, the cost estimates weren't as good as the reality.
You would vote?
So they would say, okay, I think the street's going to cost 2 million. They put it in the bond program when they did all the design and then put it out to bid, it actually cost 3 million. And so what we do today is try to have a better, precise estimate, and that comes if you have design. So if in one, one bond program, design only, we're doing that in District 5. We have a whole, a whole list of, Councilman Hernandez knows, he and I worked together on this. So if you design it, yeah, if you design it, then you have, then you know what the.
How'd you pay for the design?
And the bond program, yeah. And so, so far, none of those have come in over budget. And so the goal is just be, that's why we, that's why we brought those positions to this board here that were denied. But if we have a strong, if we have a strong engineering department, then they can have precision on estimates. It really comes down to that. Sometimes things are out of our control, like a pandemic and, or tariffs can cause extreme shock in pricing. So I should probably, I should probably just preface that the goal is not to come here and ask for COs, but there could be something that is extraordinary, and we're still going to come forward.
Better with that.
But I'm not, last summer, I told the departments, we're not doing anything in COs anymore. So if you want something, put it in a bond program.
I'm running out of time, we've got to talk fast. So, so there's, you don't use COs and then reimburse yourself later? So sometimes we use COs to get it going, right? And then we, we go to the voters for a vote and pay ourselves back with them?
So only if it's planned in the CIP. So all of these were planned in the CIP for that. I don't think, no, we have not necessarily, unless it was planned to be issued for COs, we haven't just issued COs to get it started and then, then gone to the voters on it. What we have planned recently is we go to the voters for the design and then go to the voters for the, for the construction.
And that, that, it gets it all done at the same speed?
Yeah, I mean, it will take, you know, four to six years, basically, if you do, if you do one bond issuance for design, two years for that, two years later, you go, you do another bond issuance.
I thought that's what we used to do, and now everybody was mad at us because it was taking. I thought that's what we used to do, and now everybody was mad at us because it was taking too long.
I couldn't speak to that. I'm not sure.
All right, I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Hernandez.
Okay, so I want to specify this, that when he says not using COs as a primary funding source for the project, that's where we had some issues. Now, what you're talking about is a bridge. What we did to change that is we separated the design from the construction. So we get the design first, and then you go to, then you go to the bond, you go to the bond election for construction, and then you can, you can start construction within six months. The, the problem was, is that we were short because we would do it all in one, one thing. And the estimate, the estimate that was done for the original project was four years by the, four years old by the time you got to construction. By separating them out, design and construction, you, you actually have a more, a better cost estimate because you have a design. And then when you go to the bond election and they approve it, you can start construction within six months of having that election. So you're, you're not waiting four years before you actually build. We have not, we have not come across that because the, because we have a better estimate, because we have an actual design that can be bid on, and we haven't, we haven't had that issue. We even, even with the, the swimming pool was done that way. We had the design in 2020, 2020, and then we did the, the construction, the, for, the bond for construction in 2022, and here we are.
It was within.
It was on budget.
Yeah, it was within budget. We've been, and also, just for the record, when we're well managed here in the city and the council's working well, we'll get, we get good bid prices. So in our, on our, all of our road projects, we've been getting five, six, seven bids. That's pretty tremendous for, we're a big city, but for a smaller big city. And so competition helps bring down price. And so all of our road projects that we've let here at council recently have been well below the budget.
So I went back and looked at the CIP for the drainage on North Beach, and it is currently planned for COs for the, for the next two, two years, 2026, 2027. So that really shouldn't be used as a primary funding source for those kind of projects, right? Like stormwater should be from your stormwater fund. That's why we created that 1.8 cent sales tax component for it.
Right.
So, but you don't want it to be the primary funding source. The gap thing was because we were, you know, we were doing the bond, and then we weren't doing construction until three, four years later. And, and by that time, the estimate was four years old.
Yeah, we would have to.
We haven't, we've tried to mitigate that.
Yeah, the choices, Councilman, include we could issue COs, we could use cash, we could delay the whole project, we could put it on a bond, we could cancel the project, we could scope it down, like your Alameda example. I don't recommend that, but yeah.
Okay.
We'll work through it, you know, we're going to work through it. We have options. There's no, we're not, yeah.
Okay. Councilman Roy.
You know, Gil, I'm so glad that you stepped up and gave further explanation because, you know, one of the benefits of being on council for a while is that you remember conversations, you remember situations. And I, I think in this particular case, we got to make sure that we use common sense. I think common sense really is what prevails. I remember I was at a function at the Silverado Steakhouse, and a lady was sitting there challenging certificates of obligation. And Gil was there with me, and she asked a banker and a finance major, do you understand what a certificate of obligation is? I was being nice, so I ignored her. But my point is this, is that we, we have to use common sense. And what was interesting is, is that after that conversation, I think the next week, we had a council member that had to use certificate of obligations for their district to get a project done. But it made sense to do that project at that particular time, for that district, and be able to fill that gap. And I just, I just want to remind people, when we make these blanket statements about, oh, I'm against certificate of obligations, and it will never happen, and I'm adamant against it, there is a time and a place for everything, as long as we're smart. And that's where we have to rely on city staff to make sure, and yourself and our council, to, to utilize those things effectively. And I just want to remind people that, because there's several districts here that wouldn't be where they're at today in terms of getting improvements done if we didn't use that tool. But we have to use it smart and effectively. So just, just to remind everybody of that.
Good, well said.
I'm not going to embarrass anybody, because I could sit there and cite every project that was used for a certificate of obligation. And I don't want to do that. Thanks.
Councilman.
Here, obviously, I support this, and, you know, and Peter, here's the thing, you know, you had indicated that, you know, Councilman Hernandez and a whole bunch of others came in here, and that's part of that. Well, I would argue, you know, one of the things, when I was running for reelection, I stood behind the budget and the decisions that we've made. And I think every two years, the, the voting public gets to decide, what is it, those of us that are up here. And I can tell you that during that time, I, I stood exactly on where, what, what I believed in and the things that we've done with regard to our budget. And 24,450 people agreed with me. Those are the amount of people that voted for me. So I, I think that, what is it, we need to be conscientious of that, because I, right now, we are getting, I say we, I know I am, and I know several others, are getting so many compliments about all the capital improvement that we're doing. People are getting their streets fixed. You know, it's never enough, but, you know, I, I mean, I'm on Upper Broadway. I don't know how many people had said, you know, they were high-fiving me, you know? And they appreciated that so much. I mean, some of the things that we're doing, I think the things, obviously, we've heard loud and clear from the people in animal control, or for the people that are, for, that are animal care advocates, that this needs to be expended. So I, I don't, I don't know that we have to go to the, to the voting population every time, especially when we need to expedite a project as quickly as possible. Because we hire you as professionals to be able to bring that to us, so that way we can make the decision to expend that. And then we can come back and say, no, I think you're going too far. So I, I don't think that we're going too far by deciding that we're going to continue to use COs, because it's a tool that we have available to us. And since you've been here, our, your financial rating has improved three times. I said that on the campaign trail several times.
That's true.
You know, and right now, how much are we going to save with this new refinance?
Approximately $5 million.
$5 million. So that brings us up to, not counting the favorable financing from the Texas Water Development Board, but I guess we can attribute to this city management staff probably about $25 million in savings as a result of that professional, that, that professional individuals that we've, we've selected to lead us in this charge. So I, I wouldn't, in my opinion, and I may be, I may be in the minority, but I think that with the, the, the public wants to see the work done. They want to, they want their streets fixed, they want investment in public safety. Used to be, they wanted jobs, now they just want to water their grass. And so to water their grass, it's, there's additional expenses that we're going to have to incur, or additional debt we're going to have to incur. And it makes sense for us to reinvest in our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Vaughn.
I think what we're saying, Mr. Zanoni, is it's not that you can't use COs, it's that don't, we don't want to abuse it. Don't want to abuse that process, that we can use that funding revenue. We don't want to do that. And because I like to see the citizens vote for what they want. So I think we have to be proactive in what we plan on the bond and what we need to do, because you can't do everything in one year every time. So I just think we need to really think through what we're wanting on the bond when it comes back and let the citizens vote for it. But I don't think anyone's telling you, do not use COs. They're saying, do not abuse it, to where we use it, and I'm not saying you're abusing it. I'm saying councils abuse it.
Yeah.
And that's all we're saying, is because there will become an emergency, and we're going to have to use it, and we're going to have to use common sense on whether we do or don't. But I think we just need to be proactive in what we're doing and what we want to put on and fix.
Okay, good. I agree with that. Yeah, thank you for the clarification.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. So I think that.
I move for approval.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Is there any public comment from the public? Josh, no public comment? Okay, we'll close public comment. We have a motion in a second. Please submit your vote. Okay, the motion carries. And I think that was our last item. Yeah, yeah, that was our last item. We went back and forth.
Did you want to do the briefings?
Yeah, we have two briefings still.
I'm sorry, that was not our last. Yeah, let's get the grant activity update.
Yeah.
Item number three, who's doing, grant activity update. I don't think that one's very long anyway.
This is a good news item here.
Just have a few slides.
On grant, we, Councilwoman Campos, we're going to do the grant update, the grant briefing. You know, this is important to you, so.
Thank you.
And then after that, Ryan's on hold. We're going to do a quick 89th legislative briefing if you want. It's on the agenda. What's that? He can send it to us. Okay, so we'll just do the grant update, and then we'll, we'll have Ryan's. Let's have him do an expedited one. He could do it real quick. Okay, if he can, okay, we're going to see if we can get Ryan to speed his up, but in the meantime, this one's pretty brief, but it's very important, and they have a good couple of charts. It shows the millions of dollars we've applied for via grants. So everybody, all the councils asked for this, so we're going to present it now, and Sergio, our finance director's going to.
Thank you, Peter.
Yes, sir.
Jumping right into the presentation, a little bit of background on the, on the grant, grant department, I guess, the grant activity for the city of Corpus Christi. Prior to 2022, grants were handled at the department level, and so they were responsible for their own application, managing the award themselves, doing their own reporting. Fiscal year 2022, the city did add a grant writer position to the finance department to take over most of those functions. That position has seen, you know, a few folks pass through there. Our recent folk, person was hired in May 2024. Myself and some of the senior staff came in in July of 2024. 2025 budget, second grant writer was added. There are some departments that do, still continue to produce some of their own grants, are very successful, like our fire department and our police department, our health department. So just a quick overview on the grant process. It is a, a, a long process. There can be, if you're not efficient or don't have the tools to, to manage these. So the grant process starts with a lot of research and development, with our grant writer meeting with departments, sending emails, doing a lot of assessing what their needs are. We, last year, between July 2024 and August 2024, our grant writer reached out to several departments, asking for their needs, so that we can start looking in the new fiscal year of 2025, reaching out, trying to find funding sources for those. As the grant writer finds those, she sends those out to the departments. And then once we identify those, we do have a, a meeting, fill out the application, bring that resolution to the city council for approval of the application, to submit to the grant agency. So all of that is considered our pre-award phase. Then you have your post-award phase here, is we get notification that the grant has been awarded. The finance department will bring that to council through an ordinance for approval. And then we do kickoff, do a kickoff meeting with the departments, share what guidelines are out there, do have some meetings, and set up their account structure and get the project going. After, you know, the, the finance department does help with quarterly reports for those departments, the drawdown of money, and then we do have the closeout of the project. So just some, some grant totals here. So going back to last fiscal year, total grants awarded amounted to about 17.7 million. Collectively, the city had a grant program expenditures of about 53.2 million. And about half of that, about 22 million, is related to ARPA, ARPA funds, where we had a lot of infrastructure projects. This current fiscal year we're in, we're, as of March, I'm sorry, as of, yes, as of March 31st, we had 35.6 million of grants that we've applied for and are in progress. We've been awarded about 38.8 million. And so a lot of the, here's a, just some of the departments that have been active in grants. So we have our fire department, police department, we've received a grant for IT, animal care services, CCW. You know, our gas department did have a nice 4.2 million dollar grant. So our grants do range from, this year, we had about 1,000 to about 16 million. We did have some hazard mitigation grants. I think we had, it was about 15.2 million. And that's kind of just a brief overview of our grant activity for this, for this fiscal year, where we're at. And I'll take any questions.
Okay, so these grants are all just since 2022?
No, 2025. So we have, in the current, let me go back. So in this fiscal year, we've applied for $35 million for grants, and we've been awarded about 38 million.
And where, do we know where all of these are more or less?
Yes, yeah, so.
This year, 35 million in applied for grants?
Yes, for fiscal year '25, we've applied for at least 35 million.
And roughly where? What department?
Oh, sure. Yes, I'm sorry.
That's good.
So right off the bat, to the larger ones, about 12.2 million for the aviation department. We had about 15 point, about 15 million for CCW. About 2.4 million for the Navy Air Station, and some of the larger ones, 333,000 was for victims of, of crime. And so it varies from the police department, intergovernment relations, CCW, and fire.
So CCW, airport, and who was the other one?
Oh, fire, police.
Well, no, no, but CCW and airport, and NAS, let's say, those, were those all applied for by the grant writer?
Correct, correct.
So how many were applied? Here's, here's why I'm asking.
Okay.
Because I know, you know, Pat, y'all do y'all's own CCPD, your own grant writing, libraries does their own grant writing. So how much of that is the grant writer herself or himself?
I'd have to strip those out.
And you can, you can get back with us, but here's my point, is we have one, two grant writers?
One grant writer. We have two positions.
One grant writer.
Right.
So Peter, we have one grant writer, and we've been, and I'm going to say harping for years about grant writing. You can't have a $1.8 billion organization with one grant writer, or even two, to be honest with you. But, but here's the thing, where's the analysis of how many, how many departments write their own grants very efficiently? And some, maybe they don't. Maybe they're not as efficient. I know CCPD has it down. I don't know about fire. I know library.
Fire does, yeah, the, the fire department, CCPD, health department, they have routine grants, and they, so those three departments.
I'm not talking about routine grants. That's, I'm talking about.
They have routine, and they apply for new ones pretty efficiently, both, those three.
Okay, so my point is this, someone needs to go look at this. These numbers look great, but I don't know what's in, I know, because I know some of these departments, not all, what, what comes from in-house, what comes from the actual grant writer? And what really makes sense, when you have 29 departments? And before you figure out what makes sense, you have to ask yourself, which departments really need these grants and prioritize those, right? So you're not going to say 29 absolutely need grants out there. You're going to say, I have no idea. Let's just say 15. 15 departments out of the 29 really, really need these grants. And so can this one person or two, what is it really going to take? And, and I know you don't have to necessarily hire a grant writer. You can contract grant writing. You can just pay someone to grant write, and I think we've done that before. I don't know if that's the best use of, of funds, or if that's good policy. That's whatever you decide. But I just, I feel like this is great. I'd like a little bit more detailed information, but, but I think we need a real analysis, because any council is sitting up here saying, oh, you know, grant writer, great, well, how does, how is this going to impact? Is it really even impacting us as much as it can? And you have to take into consideration, writing a grant is not just, well, let me write this, submit it, great, we got money. Then you have to make sure you have the staff to actually administer that grant, and that takes money, that, that costs, right, for personnel. So I think we need to really look at this, Peter, to see, I would love for you to come back, and Sergio, for you to stand there and say, here's the reality, Council. This organization needs five grant writers. But those five grant writers are going to require X amount of personnel, and, and we may not be able to afford that. But that's where this, a, a council would make a very, very educated decision on, you know, utilizing funding, because what would all those grants bring in? You know, who knows?
What I can add, Mayor, is that the biggest challenge some of the departments have is coming up with cost sharing. And so there are these grants that are out there, some call for 20% cost sharing.
Right.
And so as we roll out this program, those cost shares aren't budgeted, right? And so then it's scrambling, you know, Public Works is a perfect example. There's a lot of grants out there.
Right.
But they just don't have the funding for that cost match.
Right, well, that's, that's another big part of this analysis, is really when you prioritize those. I think a lot of the police ones, Pat, don't they, a lot of them require that cost share? It could be 20,000 or what have you. So all of that would have to be included in this, because then you have the priority. Your public safety, you know, that, that requires 20 grand here and there, and 50 somewhere else. That might take a bigger chunk of, of the capacity, right? That's what I'd like to see. But this is a great report. I think, I mean, we've never seen this. It's, it's better than what we've ever seen, so I appreciate it very much. And I think we're ahead of the game by having a grant writer, but I'd like to see an analysis with, with more detailed information.
Will do.
Yeah, Councilwoman Paxton.
Thank you, Mayor. I think this is a lot of additional resources that are needed. And I know that we often say, oh, there's grants for that. Why aren't we looking for grants for this? And we say that arbitrarily. But to me, it has to start with, I think, the governing entity setting priorities with, you know, what is it, 39 departments? We have to set, what are our priorities? I think that just the low-hanging. I think that just the low-hanging fruit in the city of Corpus Christi right now, public safety, infrastructure such as street and drainage, sidewalks, those types of things, public spaces and quality of life, I think those are kind of three right now that are low-hanging fruit, just to hypothetically stick those to the wall. And then what we would have to look at, to me, to kind of answer what the mayor is saying is, once we know what our budgetary priority categories are, then we have to evaluate grants that are annually rotating, that are available for us, and then plan accordingly for those to say, "We know there's a grant out there that's going to require this percentage of a match." So if we budget that accordingly, then, you know, going back to that big picture of the city budget, proactively is, I think, what she was saying, proactively looking for the new grants. That's how we would be able to quantify or justify quantifying new and a robust grant writing force. And then the departments having their annual static grants that they look for, finding those additional sources, those types of things. But I agree with the mayor where this is something that we could definitely get behind and support.
One thing we are trying to work on, council members, we do have a grant module within our ERP that was not rolled out or implemented with the implementation of our ERP. We're trying to utilize that to help us with reporting and tracking. So we are trying to build that program, but there's other things within our ERP that we need to address first before we add on to it. But so, to your point, we are, that's something we're definitely considering.
Thank you for your presentation and your hard work today.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Councilwoman Campos.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you so much, Sergio. Thank you for my questions that I had asked yesterday. And one of those questions that the mayor, you know, actually stated was, you know, do we need or should we get more grant writers? And you actually said, "We have not asked for additional grant writers. In the future, we'll be asking for grants compliance officer to help the city departments maintain compliance with grant award requirements." So I just wanted to read that statement because that's what you, you know, had responded. But I also want to acknowledge Councilwoman Paxson's point about, you know, how we can structure our grant writers and how we would be applying. I think that's a great idea with the priority of, you know, of the city council. Is it, what are our priorities and, you know, do we have the, this is where we want to see, you know, let's say, I just heard earlier from Arlene that she knows someone of a grant writer, I think that works in Alice or something like that. But that his expertise has more to do with the Texas Highway, you know, but again, it goes back to, we have to come up with 20%, whatever the grant is. So again, you know, it is about our priorities and if we, I think that's a good suggestion. And so I am grateful, I am, I mean, you know, I'm just glad that we're here at this point, that we can actually have something to report. And I love the idea too about what our mayor said, is that we, I'd like to see the exclusion of the regular, like, the police and the fire that already have their grant writing down, but some of the other departments, like I know the, what is it called, the railway, the trail over in...
Yeah, the trails, the trails to rails to trail.
Yes, and that was a result of a grant, wasn't it?
Yeah, Dan McGinn applied for that grant with the help of the, you know, the volunteers in Flower Bluffs.
Okay.
Yeah, they identified the grant and then Dan filled it out with the help of a consultant and it's $13 million.
I mean, obviously a coup for us, but I also asked you, Sergio, if we, and so I guess you just answered that question, he did too, is we as city council members can suggest grants, you know, to some of the projects that...
Sure.
That, you know, we want to move forward. So anyway, so, thank you. Good report.
Yeah, you can send them to me, Councilwoman Paxson.
Yeah, that's what he advised.
And just be mindful, we got to be careful because if we get in nine different directions to apply for nine different grants, now you're talking 81 grants, you know, is that what nine times nine is? But, so we're going to listen to you, but we'll probably give you some advice to say, "Well, we're backlogged and, you know, or this one doesn't fit the priority." But if you all have suggestions, send them to me. And especially because sometimes you hear things we don't hear, you know, from the community or from your profession. So feel free to send those to us and we're supportive of grants. We know that grants are a benefit to this community.
And I'm so glad that we were able to get that one because I know the community out there is really excited about it, so, yeah.
So one thing I would want to add is, you know, and the Tressel grant is a very good example of, we were able to get $13 million, but it's also a good example of the fact that a lot of times you have to have money to get money. And so that Tressel grant, we had to hire an engineering firm, it cost us a couple hundred thousand dollars to put the application together because we had to have plans, we had to have, you know, we had to develop that project out. It took us, I want to say, three, four, five, six months to put that all together. We got it together, we submitted it, we were successful in getting that $13 million. But just like Sergio said, you know, if we want to be more proactive in doing these, we are going to have to look at, what is the cost for application? Having those funds set aside, having those people that are experts, because there are people who, like you mentioned, somebody who is a specialist in applying for grants for Texas Dot, for Texas Parks and Wildlife. And so while we can have grant writers in-house, a lot of times they are more generalist, but if we're going to do specialized grants, a lot of times you do have to contract with a grant writing firm that specializes in those type of applications. And so it is one of those things where, you know, it, sometimes it does take money to get money.
Okay, Mayor, may I just respond?
Sure.
Exactly what the mayor said about maybe contracting out, you know, some of these grant writers, maybe that might be the opportunity to experiment with that.
Yeah, which takes money, so depending on what the departments have in their budget, but we've used, we've used them from time to time, like we did a, I think it was the Raze Grant and we, that was sourced out completely, remember it was for extensive road work, we didn't ultimately get it, but we had a consultant do it for us, I think it was like 40,000 or something.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, Councilwoman Vaughn.
Real quick, you know, it's an, it takes expertise to write these grants. I remember being at the county, we had a really good grant writer and we lost her to the port. But it is very time-consuming, it's a lot of work, so kudos to the police and fire department. But I noticed all the departments that got the grants were the bigger ones like NAS, airport, police and fire. So I think we need to focus on the ones, the smaller ones such as parking wreck, the libraries, animal control. So my suggestion is kind of what Heather said, if we could set some funds aside, because it's all in their budget, they don't have it in their budget, so they can't and they don't grow for the grants. And a lot of these are smaller grants that they get in these departments, some bigger ones, but it's just an idea to think about, maybe we need to put a fund that says, "Okay, if you want to apply for a grant, these are in here." And look at it and see if there's anything left.
For the grant matching, right?
Yeah, for the matching, because you usually have to match something.
Yeah, okay, good point. We can look at that in the budget coming up this summer.
Lots in the budget?
I know.
Thank you.
We got to cut something to get it, but yeah, we'll look at it.
Great, thank you, Councilwoman. Okay, I think that's all. Thank you so much for the presentation. Pat, thanks for being here.
Yeah.
All righty. Oh...
Okay, so I think I spoke with Councilwoman Vaughn, so I think we're just going to have Ryan send you all the presentation. That's the will of the council and then we'll be...
The will of the council, Councilwoman Vaughn.
Yeah, we'll just have Ryan send it, yeah. Thank you, Ryan. Give him a chance to eat lunch now.
Is he even on? I texted him, he didn't reply. Yeah, he's eating dinner at Caroline's.